Okay, thank you. I'm going to go ahead and call this meeting of the Placerville City Council to order for Tuesday, May 12th. We have a closed session that we will adjourn into, but before that, wanted to open up if anyone had, if public had any comments on the closed session items.
It appears we have no attendees, Mayor, so I will assume no, no comments.
Okay, all right then, we will.
Before you do that, I believe the city attorney has a comment he would like to make, Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Driscoll.
I do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've asked for closed session on this item pursuant to government code section 54956.9 subsection E subsection 1. And the reason for it is that based upon information that I've received, I believe there are circumstances and facts which exposed the city to significant litigation. That particular code section that I cited does not require disclosure of what those facts and what that information is at this point.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Driscoll. Any, okay, no. Okay, then, seeing no other public comments, then we will go ahead and adjourn out to our closed session. So we'll be logging off of this meeting. Okay, great. Everyone's here. Okay, we will go ahead and get started. So, good evening, Placerville, and welcome to the May 12th meeting of the Placerville City Council. Will everyone please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the, we got, do we have the, our flag? There we go. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands: one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, well, thank you, everybody, for patiently waiting for us tonight. Let's go ahead and have roll call. Ms. O'Connell.
Mayor Saragosa.
Here.
Vice Mayor Thomas.
Here.
Councilmember Acuna.
Here.
Councilmember Borelli.
Here.
Councilmember Taylor.
Here.
Okay, great, thank you. We'll move on to item number three, announcements and presentations to the public, starting with item 3.1, receive and file update on public records request. And this is Ms. O'Connell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is just a quick update on the current public records requests that we've received. There have been a few that we received since the last meeting, which have been responded to. There is that one outstanding one from February 12th that we are trying to produce on a rolling basis. The last set of records was, was sent out to the tribe on May 8th, and so the next one will be June 12th. And that should, I believe, be the, the last production. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, any, thank you, Regina. Any questions from council members? Okay, seeing none, I'll open it up for public comment. Okay, Regina, any public comments?
Yes, we do have one. I'm just trying to figure this out.
Sure, no problem.
It doesn't seem to be working the same way it did last time. Sorry.
Maybe you caught my disease.
Cleve, am I still co-host?
You should be. I'll check again, but let me follow up. Now you are, Regina, sorry, I thought I'd checked that. Go ahead.
That's, that's fine, Cleve, thank you. We'll have comment from Kirk Smith.
Good evening, Kirk.
Hi, good evening. Hope you feel better and take the COVID test. I will keep you around for a while.
Thanks.
Here's my comment. It's real brief. You, just, your law should be for disclosure, and I think that we should have a right to know how much you've spent taxpayer money in this battle with the tribe. I looked at the statement in the, from Dave Warren on the list of checks paid out. Today, it's supposed to be something like $31,000 paid to Best, Bass, and Krieger to represent the city regarding this records request. That's an extraordinary sum of money. And I asked Dave, thinking it wouldn't be very burdensome, because after all, it's on the calendar, and you should, I'm sure, have those things ready to pull up on your screen. But it was referred to John Driscoll. And that's often how things happen. It's very difficult to get records from the city. We have a right to know, and I, I'm just trying to add them up. How much has been paid to that law firm, and how much are paid to paralegals to do this work? Lastly, I mentioned that this same grievance that we've been hearing about for the last several meetings was raised about six years ago, some of the same people. And at that time, you got suggestions from the public to help make your job easier. One was to hire students as interns. It is something where you could pay them just an honorarium, a modest honorarium, and academic credit to, to do the record searches and to come up with templates and all kinds of things, because it's not rocket science. And the second thing is that you would have them put on a website. So instead of each meeting, you put it out like this, put it on the, on a website for everybody to see, just like the county does. The advantage of that is that persons like myself and others can look at it and see who's asked for what. And that could reduce the amount of duplication, because when I've asked other people who've made requests provided by this list you've got now on 3.1, I find out that I've asked for some of the same things. So, I don't, I think, I think the whining is really not appropriate when the law was designed to protect the public, make sure we got information about our government, and because it's inscribed in the California Constitution.
Do you have about 15 more seconds?
You took an oath of office to uphold the Constitution of California, and that expressly includes the Public Records Act provisions. Thank you.
Thank you, Kirk. Staff, I don't know if you had any comments. Do we have any, well, first, are there any other public comments on item 3.1?
Yes, Sue, go ahead.
Okay, I'll start over. I've been talking. I didn't, I just pushed the button. So, Sue Taylor, I just noticed that this is, I know the city council's been talking about wanting to post public requests that the public makes on your agenda so everybody can see, almost in a intimidation type of way. And I, I have a concern with that, to put it on that, I don't know if that was the purpose that you're doing it this way, but I actually agree with what Kirk just said. I think the county does do a, where anybody can go look at what somebody's already asked, and it's not, it's more public-friendly. So, I would just suggest, I don't see why this has to be on the agenda every meeting, and I think it would be better to have a place on your website that if people want to get an update on where you're at with public requests, they can just go to that site. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue.
Okay, now we have comment from 846.
Hi, it's Jennifer. Hi, it's Jennifer.
Good evening, Jennifer.
Thank you. Yeah, I just, following up, I guess I just want to say, I think the solution being proposed is the website, if that's, you know, problematic. I guess I, I do find it odd to focus on one request rather than report out, it's like a bias, why you wouldn't, you know, in fact, it sounded like you got some other requests. And so, it seems like all of them should be announced, I guess. But it does seem like, I haven't seen the county list of that. That sounds like a good solution. I know sometimes agencies not only post who's making their requests, but then they actually, in certain cases, post the information that's being provided, because they are public records. And a lot of times, if somebody, if one person is requesting it, others have an interest and they get shared anyway. But it does certainly seem like there's a targeting of the tribe that just seems like a bias and inappropriate and retaliatory. And I just think you should just be aware of that feedback-wise, because there's a lot of other public requests, I'm sure, that go on, and it seems odd to just focus on this one. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue.
All right, number 857.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
Yeah, I've noticed that this item has been on the agenda for, what, at least three meetings. I find it odd. If it's going to become a regular item, I think it needs to be put on consent calendar, but even there, I don't think it really has a place on a regular council meeting. If it needs to be put on the website, and the people that are interested in can go look at it, but it really does look like intimidation on the city's part. So, I don't think that's, that's very cool of you guys, so, that was my input.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I see no further public comment, but I do want to just remind the public that if they're joining by phone, they can press star nine to implicate their desire to speak. And then, of course, there's the raise hand option at the bottom of the screen if they're joining by their computer.
Thank you, Regina. Okay, we'll bring it back to the council. Any questions for council, or if staff wanted to make any comments?
Mayor, if I could.
I guess, yep, Mr. Morris.
Just one comment. I, I don't know if they had not seen it, or just a misunderstanding. We did only mention, there is only one open PRA that is on the list, but there are actually six PRA requests that are included in the report. So, we were not singling out any particular PRA, only we mentioned that one because it is still open and we are still responding to it. The others have been responded to and completed at this point. And I don't know if Mr. Driscoll had any comments regarding the first speaker and regarding the request for, that we received actually just today, I believe, or yesterday, or information.
Mr. Mayor, we received that request this morning. Unfortunately, other matters are pressing as well, and we didn't have time to respond to it. Mr. Smith will get the information that he's seeking. However, I can say this, that to assume that the item on the warrant register represents just the cost with respect to the one PRA request by the tribe is, is not correct to assume that. That law firm does a number of things for us, and so the amount reflected on the warrant register reflects other matters that that firm is handling for the city in addition to the records request. And those, those documents need to be culled, because there are certain types of invoice. Mr. Smith also requested the invoices, and the invoices contain information that often is attorney-client privilege and is exempt from disclosure. Those things have to be reviewed to make sure that the correct information and not confidential, personal, or attorney-client privilege information is being disclosed.
Thank you, John. Any further comments by council? Okay, seeing none. Thank you, Regina, for the update, and we will move on to item 3.2, brief comments by city council, and I'll encourage everyone to be brief, since I know we have a lot still and we're late. We'll start with Vice Mayor Thomas.
Your beauty.
Thank you. I am good for now, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Acuna.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, good evening to everybody that's watching, and I want to say good evening to all of our staff members. I miss seeing all your smiling faces at, at Town Hall, and I hope that as we progress through the COVID emergency, that we're able to return to that. Want to thank Chief Tim Cordero for his continued time in attending our meetings. I know he has a lot on his plate. I would like to say another special shout-out to Nick Stone and the Public Works crew. Nick and the crew have been doing an outstanding job of taking care of a lot of annual and one-time maintenance issues in town right now, while traffic volumes are at record lows. You'll see all that shiny new red curb and yellow and green. That's all greatly appreciated, and Nick and his crew jumped on a huge sump hole behind the city bathroom by the courthouse about a week or so ago, and did a great job of fixing that. Those are the kinds of things that are important, because those things are also liabilities, and they are not providing a service to our public. So, I appreciate him getting on all of these things and taking advantage of this unique situation. Also, I got an email late this afternoon from Beale Air Force Base regarding another flyover, and if it's all right, Mr. Mayor, I'll go ahead and share that.
Absolutely.
I was excited to see that. This is from the Ninth Reconnaissance Wing, a salute to Northern California with a flyover May 15th. I believe there was one of these last Friday down in the valley. This one will include a flyover over Marshall Hospital.
Oh, yeah.
The four, the four-ship flight will be leaving from, excuse me, Beale Air Force Base on Friday morning, the 15th of May, and they will be flying over Redding, Red Bluff, Chico, Paradise, Nevada City, Placerville, and Auburn before returning to their base. The current scheduled calls for the four ships from Beale to be over Placerville, specifically Marshall Hospital, doing a flyover at 12:50, 12:50 PM this Friday afternoon. So, we want to thank all of those members of the military that are making this, salute to all of our first responders and all medical personnel that have helped us through the COVID, and their salute to, their continuing salute to our region. So, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mark, and thank you for the reminder as well, and for the, letting the public know. Councilmember Borelli.
I just want to say thank you, Mark. It was so funny, because I was trying to think of who I could call to try to arrange a flyover in Placerville. I'm really happy, this, that makes me feel good. I just want to say thank you to everybody that, and I know there's been so much hard work put in by our staff. Cleve, they've just done a magnificent job in, with this COVID-19 thing, and I just want to thank everybody, and I want to thank all the businesses that have cooperated and made it possible for us to achieve this momentous upgrade, phase two.
Thank you, council member. Councilmember Taylor.
No comments, other than there's a, a chance I might miss the next meeting, as it's the day before my due date. So, if I'm not here next week, or the next meeting, then that is why.
Got it. No comments for me this evening. We'll go ahead and move on to item number four, which is closed session reports. City Attorney Driscoll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight, the council did not take reportable action in closed session.
Okay, great, thank you, sir. Moving on to item five, adoption of agenda.
Move for the adoption.
Second.
We have a first and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed? Seeing none, all right. Agenda is adopted. We do not have any ceremonial items tonight, ceremonial matters, so we'll move on to item seven, which is public comments. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the council on any matter not on the agenda that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. And for this, I will hand it back over to Ms. O'Connell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If you are joining by phone, please press star nine to implicate your desire to speak, and you will be called upon using the last three digits of your phone number. If you are joining by your computer, use the raise hand option at the bottom of your screen. Please unmute yourself when called upon and voluntarily give your name for the record. Public comment is now open for 7.2 oral communication. And we will hear from Maureen Dion Perry.
Good evening, Maureen.
Mute myself, okay. Hello.
Hello, good evening. Yep, we got you.
Good. It's good to see you there. And I wanted to talk about my usual things. I'm with the Western Slope Coalition on Affordable Housing and Homelessness, and I'm also involved with the COVID homeless crisis team. There's a lot of good things going on, and I wanted to start by thanking you for your leadership in approving the joint policy statement on homelessness with the Board of Supervisors. I think this was a very important step. We were very excited. I have a number of questions for you and some comments on this whole subject area. The companion parallel paths with expediting the strategic plan along with identifying various, the feasibility of various sites for the Transitional Housing Navigation Center was brilliant, but unfortunately, it doesn't seem that the strategic planning process will be expedited. That is disappointing, and I hope we can figure out something to do about that sooner rather than later. The COVID response team is now placing our highly vulnerable homeless neighbors in the Pollock Pine's Best Western Hotel. Imagine being a senior. I've been up there working with some of the people, and it is just heartbreaking, seeing your citizens with multiple chronic illnesses who are living roughly in the woods. We really need to act and have something happen. We have the winter coming. It's only a few months away, actually. November through March is the period of time when the nomadic shelter would operate some four to five nights a week. I wanted to ask if you have any ideas you could pass on to me for one place to have a trial, winter, emergency, transitional housing, and navigation center. That is a long-term goal, but I think it would be valuable to have a trial of doing this and see how we can put this together to make something work for the winter.
30 seconds remaining.
Okay. Last but not least, I would like to request that the joint statement, joint policy be on the agenda of your next meeting in order to discuss its implementation, timeline, and status. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Maureen.
Now, accepting public comment from 846.
Hi, can you hear me?
I can, oh, we can. Good evening.
Great, hi, it's Jennifer, and I just, I guess I just wanted to say, following up on the records request topic, which might come up again, I, you know, I believe the tribe initially was sent a whole bunch of city agendas, which weren't actually even relevant to the request, and anyway, I just wanted to get that stated, because I think there was a little bit of, you know, twisting the process there, delaying a little bit response. But the other thing is, on that, I mentioned last time that there had been, you know, some hostile communications to me, you know, that was sort of related to city business, and I reported a second incident that was actually involved the Rossi family from Shingle Springs, as well as me. And I'm just saying, I want you to be aware that there's, you know, a, a threatening hostile situation that's related to city business, and I think how, how all of that transpires. And then, I guess, other than that, just want to say that, you know, this Placerville historic district is really important, and we're looking forward to whatever is coming out of the Clay Street project in terms of, you know, more information about the historic district, and I just want to really encourage the city to take an interest in really, really learning about this district, and it's, it's many, many, many different resources. And I guess with that, I'll, I'll be sharing the PowerPoint from that First Placerville History Channel, I'll post it, that, you know, the session wasn't recorded, but one thing in researching that, we did discover that Goldbug Park actually has a historic district status with the National Register. It's actually a historic district, as well as being Goldbug Park, and it is actually a extensive nomination package, I think it's like 100 pages, with lots of photos and documentation, and a letters, letters of support from the Historic Preservation Officer, the county supervisors, and Carl Borelli for the city at the time, in the 80s. And it's just important to realize that we've gone down this path with, you know, really recognizing the significance of the resources here. So, I will be sharing that. I appreciate that Pierre, you know, was interested, expressed interest, and I will follow up with Pierre as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Now, accepting public comment from 011.
Good evening, council members. Laurel Brentbaum, Eldorado County Chamber of Commerce. Can you hear me?
Good evening, Laurel, yep.
Okay, good. I, I just wanted to report out to the council that we, if, I think the council members are aware, I'm not sure that the public is, that our stimulate small business grant process is moving forward. We will have applications available in the very, very near future for all of our small businesses on the Western Slope to apply. The applications are going to be as brief and user-friendly as possible, and we're looking forward to being able to help to support, to retain, and help our local businesses survive.
Laurel, quick question on that. Is there a website, should they be going to the county's, to the chamber's website to look for that application?
Yeah, when the application's available, yes, that's absolutely right, and we will be publicizing that. We'll be pushing that out on social media, as well as in the Mountain Democrat. Right now, it is available for donations, so if anyone is inclined, they can click on that website and donate to that, to that effort, but the application is, is being completed, being finalized in the very, very near future. So, that, that is where the application will be available. And then, this is also, I need to say, in collaboration with the Eldorado Hills Chamber of Commerce, and supported by the Eldorado Community Foundation.
Thank you, Laurel.
Now, taking public comment from 857.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
So, I just wanted a thanks of appreciation. Local road being fixed, and I don't know if they had extra asphalt or whatever, but they went ahead and fixed a couple potholes that were within stone's throw, so, thank you. Much appreciated. On the, oh, when this whole COVID thing is hopefully over, maybe the council could consider keeping this Zoom and phone-in system? This is great. I can continue to get work done and still talk. There is a guy living in Winters and Soul's old dumpster enclosure, and during the day, he opens the door and throws a bunch of junk out in the parking lot for sale. So, hopefully, something could be done about that, because it's not a very attractive thing for the city. On the city's COVID page with the updates, you know, from the mayor and all the other things, if they could be, like, towards the top of those, last updated on X date, that would be great. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for those suggestions as well. Thank you.
Now, taking public comment from Kirk Smith.
Hi.
Good evening, Kirk.
Good evening. Again, I wanted to follow up on a matter I raised at the last meeting during the same public comment period, and I said how troubled I was very deeply that the city disclosed the location, the exact address, and the identity of the property owner of the Indian site up on Broadway. We read in the paper, the records request, all of that kind of information. We read in the paper, the records request, all of that kind of information. And the response we got was, one, that it was the tribe that disclosed the records request. It was the tribe that disclosed the location. And that it's typically done. It's not usually, you know, usually block out those names or redact it. Well, there's two things that's troubled about that. There's no evidence that the tribe did disclose it. They deny it. And there's a lot of objective ways to figure out that it did not come from the tribe. It came from members of the city staff. Secondly, as far as you don't redact, you do it all the time. It was done in Ellen Beerkamp's recent request that's listed on your 8.3 item. In addition, I asked for something last year, had about 12 items, and that got back some materials. A whole bunch of pages were missing, and what would be inserted was that it's communication with council members. Nobody explains why that was kept out. But the reason you should block it is for the same reasons that are identified in the National Historic Preservation Act. It requires the information to be kept confidential for the same reasons that everybody else has done the same thing. I first saw that site when I was about eight or nine years old. And imagine all that time, and I didn't disclose it freely to people for just the same reason the tribes always kept it secret, because you're afraid of vandalism. And yet, last week, the public was told that the building was empty, that it was abandoned. Nobody lived there. Vacant. Well, the problem with that is that the city police department, for years, worked with the owner to make sure that they guard against break-ins and thieves and things like that. So the advice from the city police department was leave a radio or TV set on so that people can catch it. And again, please, no, don't beat around the bush. We need to know, and there's no reason you can't tell us now, about how much have you spent of this outrageous sum on a records request? You told the reporter how much it was once. You can certainly do it again. Thank you.
Thank you, Kirk.
There's no further public comment, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Regina. Cleve, I don't know if you have any update on sort of the strategic planning on the homeless side? If there was anything else you wanted to add on that front? I know we had some general questions there.
Yes, Mayor, let me, let me comment on that. We do have a meeting set up with our consultant, myself, Marshall Hospital, and county representatives as well as the sheriff. It's an internal meeting, not for the public. But to talk about that process is scheduled for May 22nd, and we have a proposed plan of how to move forward from there. I, I will acknowledge the concern that perhaps the strategic plan cannot be expedited. That did go back to the, to the committee to talk about, and our consultant recommended that we not do that. My understanding is the reason is that with, because of the unknowns due to COVID-19, our concern that coming out of this may be a completely different world than what we have today. And so that was actually their recommendation, that we not try to expedite the strategic plan. Now, we do still feel perhaps though that there's some parallel items that we can do prior to that, that we want to discuss, that may be able to come back prior to even completion of the strategic plan. So that's the update for now. May 22nd, we will have that meeting, which should allow me at least to give a brief update on your next council meeting on May 26th.
Great. Thank you. I don't know, did you have any comments you wanted to make on on the Indian artifact site?
I don't think so. I'll ask Mr. Driscoll maybe if he has any comments regarding that. I will recognize and state that we did, we did provide the Public Records Act request to the Mountain Democrat. I also want to note, however, that nowhere in that request did it say anything about a sacred Indian site. So I am admitting that we did provide that. However, the information that there was, there was a sacred site was not provided by us, but was provided by someone else.
And I think that's correct, to my knowledge anyways.
Okay. Thank you. And we'll look into the Wiener Schnitzel garbage and selling of stuff out there, so.
Mayor, if I can, if I can mention, we've referred our police department out there twice. I believe we have Commander Wren on the call. If he would like to respond to that, I know that we've been out there, our hot team, and I was understand, been told twice now that they've been cleared out of there. Commander Wren, would you like to respond to that?
Yes, you're, you're right, Cleve. They've been, we've contacted two transients, and they've both been moved into temporary housing up in Pollock Pines. We've also been in contact with the property owner to offer suggestions in how he can secure his property and maybe make it less desirable for people who want to camp out there.
Thank you, Commander. Okay. Did, I'll move to item 7Y. I know I went kind of backwards. Did we have any written communication this evening?
Mayor, there were a couple of items primarily related to item 12.2 on your agenda, and those have been provided to the council related to the cannabis item, so.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Then moving on to item 8, the consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion by a roll call vote unless any member of the council wishes to remove an item for discussion.
I move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
All right. We have a first and.
Mayor, I do have one. I would like to make a comment, so probably do it beforehand here.
Yep, absolutely.
With regard to the, to the Orchard Hill issue 8.5, I don't want to pull it, but I would like to comment that I do know that they have a, that their fees that they are charged are static, and they've been that way for, since I guess when they were built in, was it 95? And has it been that long ago, 95, when those were built? Or am I thinking of something else? But those are static. And so with the idea that, you know, the, the, we've, we've had several discussions about the playground equipment there being in disarray, or not disarray, but in, you know, they're, they're aging out, so to speak. And, and we need to actually approach that, in my opinion, we need to approach that, that organization or the, what is it, the HOA there and discuss and consider discussing the idea of what to do with those and allow them to make a decision on this. And we're, we're pretty much just, you know, passing this through, doing the same thing we've done for many years. However, I think at some point, we do need to take a proactive approach on giving them the opportunity to have a voice in this matter when it comes to, because, because as it is right now, we really, that organ, that, that fund cannot support the replacement of those or even the maintenance of. And so I think we have an obligation to do that at some point. Now, I'm not saying we need to do that now, but I think in the next year, I'd like to at least, you know, before next year, I'd like to see if we can't reach out and have a conversation with them.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I've brought this up several times in the past few years, actually, and I think Dave Warren might have some comment on this, his answer to me, because I've also suggested that the fees need to be raised. Something needs to happen, but it's quite a process to do it. So, but I think Dave, you can explain it like you did to me. If that's, if that's all right with you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Yeah. Thank you, Council. Good evening. Yes, it is something that we've been wanting to take a look at. We actually received a proposal about a year ago from NBS, who's your consultant that kind of manages that district out at Orchard Hill. And that, that proposal was about $30,000, which actually exceeds the annual assessments. So what we talked about is eventually doing kind of a scaled-down analysis. Myself, Mr. Zeller, looking at, start interfacing with the community about what they would like to see, you know, with that assessment district and the improvements in the park. Unfortunately, that hasn't happened yet because, due to other workload impacts, but it is definitely something we need to do, and I'll commit to you to take a closer look at that working with Mr. Zeller this coming year.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Warren. Vice Mayor? Did you have a? Okay. I think what we might want to do here then is either council member Borelli or Vice Mayor Thomas, maybe at future agenda items, we bring this back again today, later on in this council meeting. So we have a first and a second. I'm going to go ahead and open it up for public comment on the consent calendar.
Now accepting public comment from 857.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Can you hear me?
Yes, good evening.
Okay. Looking on the accounts payable, lots of chemicals, lots of dollars for chemicals listed. I'm just wondering if any of those are for the pool? If they are, if they can be returned, if you're going to be fallow for a year or so? Otherwise, that's like a couple gallons of roundup, I guess. I don't know. And just a request for the minutes that have been approved during these electronic meetings. I was looking through them, and I wouldn't know if I read them 20, 40 years from now, that there was no public attendance allowed. So I'm asking for an asterisk in the header of those approved minutes that just notes public was not allowed to come to the meeting. It was done by computer or by phone. That's just a request. Thank you. That's all.
Thank you.
No further public comment, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Actually, we do have one, if you don't mind. Kirk Smith would like to speak.
Sure. Go ahead, Kirk. I think you're on mute still.
You're right. Thank you. Technically challenged. Getting back to, it's check number 84023, the $31,000 to Best, Beston, Krieger. That's the third, the third largest expense this month of all the money spent, which I guess there's a total down here of a half million dollars. So that's a lot of money. Couldn't we have an estimate at least? Dave, I'm sure would know. Couldn't he in ballpark terms tell us how much of that went towards the records request? Thank you.
Thank you.
And I see no further comment, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, great. In terms of further discussion, I know, in terms of the pool, just wanted to make a clarification there, and I think Terry, you can tell me if I'm wrong, but even if we're having it shut, we still need to procure the chemicals to keep it, we still have to continue to treat it regardless of whether it's open. I'm not saying that that's what all the chemicals were, but I think there's still some costs associated with just maintaining the facility.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, that's correct. We had, just before we had the closure of the pool, we did have a, a delivery of chlorine and acid, and that has to come through a special truck, and it has to be, since it's liquid, it has to be transferred into our tanks by a qualified handler. And we need those, those chemicals to keep the water clear, whether or not we have a bather load. The cost that we calculated for the savings at the pool was based upon the three months of the, of the bather load versus three months where we just have to keep the pool idle and clear. So yeah, the, the chemicals were necessary.
Thank you, Mr. Zeller. And in terms of the question on the BBK, I want to make sure that we provide the correct information. I don't want to put out estimates. So we will get that information, Kirk. I know from your, your PRA request, but I want to make sure it's the right information as opposed to having Mr. Warren give you an estimate. So we'll, we will get that information. Cleve, would you want to say something?
Yeah, I was just going to mention on the, on the chemical issue, just a reminder, we do fairly extensive chemicals at the wastewater treatment plant that may be part of those. I don't, I don't have that detail in front of me, but I do know that we spend a lot of money on chemicals for our.
Thank you, Cleve, and Rebecca too. I know she, she sent me a message on that, so thank you for, for bringing it up. Okay. We have a first and second. Any further discussion, Council? Seeing none. Ms. O'Connell, roll call, please.
Mayor Saragosa?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Thomas?
Aye.
Councilmember Acuna?
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, everybody. That passes. We do items tonight. We do not have anything pulled from the consent calendar. No ordinance this evening or public hearings, so we will move on to discussion and action items. Item 12.1, review action of the Eldorado County Board of Supervisors and Public Health Officer regarding COVID-19 and provide direction to staff if necessary. Mr. Morris has this for us tonight. Thank you, Cleve.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. To start out with, I want to state that this has been rapidly evolving since last week or since our last council meeting especially, but several things happening just in the last week. As you know, the council, I was, I informed the council that I had wrote a letter to the state along with the Eldorado County's attestation to meeting the requirements for stage two. And I did write that letter, was included with our packet that went to the state. We went through quite a process in consultation and et cetera. And as many of you already know, today, we were one of two counties that were announced that were approved or published our plan on their, the state's website to show that we are ready to go to stage two. So that is great information for us, good work by our county team that we had together. A lot of credit to Dr. Williams and her writing in the report, our county ELC, the managers that did a lot of, provided a lot of information to that county CEO and others on that level that put it all together. So this is, this is a great step in the right direction to get us moving back towards being open, being able to open up. I just want to mention a couple of things to help everyone understand this does, if you look at the county's press release, and hopefully everybody can find that, it's on our website, it's on their website, but it has some great information. I want to state that this does allow our small retail shops and other retail shops now to open up within the guidelines that are set by the state. So you can look at either those guidelines that the state has and/or the county guidelines that they have. They're pretty consistent, and what they have there, I would encourage everyone to look at those. In the county's plan guidelines, there are a couple of things that I would recommend. One of them is a form that we would recommend you put up on, any businesses put up on their front door that basically spells out then saying that we are following these guidelines and encouraging those who come to visit their stores to follow those guidelines also. One of the big issues that we have had that are now out there is for dining in at restaurants. As you know, that was not available at this point. But that is now available. Again, I want to emphasize that those restaurants need to go through that process for guidelines that is on the county's website, and look at those and see what they can and cannot do. There are still restrictions in terms of physical distancing, cleaning, et cetera, that they need to be aware of. I think for smaller restaurants, hopefully that is not a big impact on them and that they can easily do that. And, and put that together, we're looking forward to those restaurants being to, able to open up and, and offer the dining in service. There are other things that are outlined, as you know, in the, the report came out from the state, dining restaurants, limited services in terms of laundromats, dry cleaners, other laundry services, auto repair, car washes, landscapers, et cetera, outdoor museums, shopping centers, and all in-store retail. I've talked about that one already. All office-based workplaces, I want to mention there that we are looking All office-based workplaces, I want to mention there that we are looking at from our city perspective now what we do need to do to be able to open up our city offices. There are some regulations we want to follow also to keep our employees safe. And so we are working on that process and we'll have a report back to you soon on that. And then manufacturing industry supporting retail, all logistic industry supporting retail. And I think that's it, in addition to those that were already open from state one. So I encourage everyone to, those businesses that are interested in opening and have the permission to open at this time to look at those guidelines. They're fairly detailed. Hopefully you can easily pull those up. I know they're attached to, the guidelines are actually attached to the county press release. I've asked our staff to get them up on our website in detail so that you can look at those and pull those up. If they're not up there tonight, they will be tomorrow. And we welcome any suggestions, questions, recommendations from those businesses if they can keep us informed and let us know what they have. I wanted to mention quickly that we, I heard one request that might have come in today. I forget where it was, but about potential additional outdoor dining or restaurants. We are looking into that. I've asked our city engineer to look at some designs where we can allow additional, either in the parking area, a lot in front of restaurants and/or on the sidewalk in front of restaurants and still meet the requirements that we need there, but allow for that additional outdoor dining. That is actually, I noticed encouraged in the state guidelines for additional outdoor dining. And it does even address ABC permits, et cetera, that those can be accomplished for outdoor dining. So I would encourage businesses to get in touch with us if you are interested. We will be putting something out. I know that Rebecca has already, in fact, today she sent me two or three drawings of samples of what we can do. And so I have those, we will be formalizing those and putting something together. It will be, my recommendation, unless I hear any objections, is that we will put out, it will require a simple encroachment permit, no fee encroachment permit that we can put out and allow those to proceed and allow for that additional dining. Now, we're talking just about dining here, but I suppose I would be remiss if I didn't include if there are other retail businesses that for whatever reason see a need or an advantage to perhaps being able to do something on the sidewalk, that they think they can take advantage of that. I think we would welcome that opportunity also if, if they see that it makes sense for them. So with that, I'll turn it back to you, Mayor and Council. I think that's all I have for tonight, but I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Morris. Questions or comments at this point from City Council? I guess Vice Mayor Thomas.
I have a little cautionary tale to discuss in that I've been watching Germany quite closely. And they have been one of the first, first countries in the European region to come out and really open up their economy and open up that what's going on. And they quickly went from below 1.0 to 1.1, which is, according to Angela Merkel's, it was her breaking point to start shutting down again. And, and the reason I bring this up is not because that I, because I want to, I want to caution everybody that's, that's here listening in on this, and I'll do this even further into the future. This is, what we're doing is not just opening up for people to do whatever they want. I'm a big believer in personal freedom. And when I say that, it's not that I'm looking to impose upon people to, to stop them from doing whatever they want. I'm looking to encourage people to take responsibility and make sure that they are, one, protecting their loved ones, protecting our, our economy and protecting our community. And, and that means that we need to continue doing what we have done that has made us so successful in this county in terms of reducing our reinfection rate, where people are, the R factor, where people are infecting more people. And I think our community has done an amazing job where we don't have this spread. We don't have this, these hotspots where things are blowing up because one person went and hugged 30 people, those 30 people hugged another 30 people and then bam. That, that's not happening here. And it's because of the, of the efforts that we have put in. And, and I want to encourage people to continue that. This is not an opportunity for us to go out and, and for lack of better words, be willy-nilly. We still need to be very conscientious of how we're approaching this because the, the last thing we want to do is be, is have to deal with the idea of going back in. And the reality is, and this is a true reality, that we're going to have people come in from out of this community that, that are going to be, that are going to bring the virus here. And, and, and I, it's, you can almost guarantee it. And so in that light, what happens with it when they leave it behind is up to us because they are potentially going to leave it behind. And so us, us practicing those good social distancing, those good hygiene, all the things that the hospital has been promoting is critical as we move forward. And to be, and have an awareness that, that we are going to have more cases as we open up. You know, the idea that it's gone away and it's going to stay away is, is not realistic in my mind. And, and I don't think the hospital or the medical director is, is making that assumption either. And so I just want to encourage people to continue on their efforts and not to relax those efforts in terms of, of using good practices. And, and I'm going to continue on this because it's, because we, we've done well. We've got here, we need to continue doing what we're doing. And, and I think that's it.
Mayor? Thank you, Vice Mayor. Yes, Councilmember Taylor.
Dennis, those are great comments. I, I completely agree. We still need to be cautious as we move forward. I just wanted to clarify a couple of things because I know that there's been a lot of confusion with businesses as they look to reopen. So Cleve, I'm just going to ask you a couple of questions and chime in. My understanding is that businesses, before they reopen, they still need to develop a plan and new policies in terms of cleaning and social distancing and how they're going to provide a safe environment in response to COVID-19. And this needs to be like a written implementation policy.
That's correct. It should be their plan that they're developing. We are not going to go in and say, where's your plan? Let's see it, I want to inspect it. We're just telling them, this is what you need to do. It's up to them to do it and be ready to move forward.
Okay. And then another, several times in, the county guidelines might differ a little bit from the state's guidelines, but my understanding is that in terms of specific industries, we are all required, you know, all the businesses that are opening up are required to follow the state's guidelines. So if there's a difference, we'll default to the state's guidelines.
That is correct. Yes.
All right.
We can, we can only be stricter, but not less than the state.
Okay. That's all my question. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Acuna.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Cleve. And to add on to Dennis's comments, Cleve, who's going to be monitoring our progress and our numbers as we move forward? Would that be our health director, Dr. Williams?
Correct, correct. Just as they are doing now, that will not change. We hope that people will continue to test. As you know, we have the testing site that is available for anyone, basically. And we hope that they, if there's any hint or any question about someone being infected, we hope that they will get tested. It also requires them a little bit changed, a little bit of what they've been doing, a little bit more strict in terms of the track and trace system that they will be following going forward. And Dr. Williams has stated that they're ready to do that and report with us.
So she'll make sure that we remain within the governor's guidelines. And we, we spoke earlier today about Placer County. One of the, one of the criteria for us was that we could not have had a COVID-related death within the last two weeks, in which we have not, which allowed us to move forward. Unfortunately, Placer County doesn't, is unable to make that same claim. So that prohibits them. So she'll monitor that though as we move forward. As, as Dennis pointed out, there, a new challenge begins as we open back up to some new, new operation and new exposure. Is that?
Yes.
Okay. The other question is, is have you heard anything through all the various meetings? Is the governor doing anything to discourage and remind all of us as Californians about he still does not want us doing non-essential travel? And this goes back to what Dennis was speaking of. And I know this last weekend especially, I saw several large groups of motorcycles, well over 50 or 60 bikes in groups parked in various parts of town. In a, one was in Coloma. So people are coming here. I'm sure that those were trips that were planned. And they are doing, just like Dennis pointed out, they are bringing their level of exposure to our community. Have you heard anything regarding the governor getting that message back out? We're not, I think Dennis uses willy-nilly. I would never think it willy-nilly, but sadly, that's what's liable to happen and it could punch, punch, punch our numbers in the wrong direction quickly.
So all I can say basically to that is we, we are well aware of it. It's been a topic of discussion in our meetings with OES. And we plan on messaging that. I will say that the governor's order did not relax the travel restrictions. So travel restrictions are still in place. You're encouraged to stay within your general area where you live slash work at this time and not going out, you know, you can go out and recreate within your area, but not go to, out to other areas to recreate. So we, we do plan on doing additional messaging and communication and education with the public. But there is nothing to say that, you know, no, we're not going to put a gate on the border and say you can't come up from Sacramento. That's, I've been told by, at least by one person, that would be illegal in terms of interstate commerce and things like that and laws that are in place. So, but we, so the primarily through education and communication with the public through our means that we have will be our method for encouraging people not to.
Thank you, Cleve.
Yes, Councilmember Borelli.
I just wanted to share, I just was looking at my emails that came through and the Sacramento Bee has announced that, it says, "Moving quickly Tuesday afternoon, the governor's office announced it is giving the go-ahead now to six counties to reopen some businesses, including Placer County, the largest and most urban county in the state so far, to get the green light." And it also says Nevada County. So I think this is good news for us. I was kind of anticipating an influx of a lot of people coming here, but with these surrounding counties also being approved to open, it'll save us from having that, I believe.
It's true. That's a good point, Councilmember. Yes, Councilmember Taylor.
I noticed on Highway 50, just past town heading east, there's a sign that says, you know, stay home, avoid gatherings on the highway. Is there any way to get more of those signs? I know it's probably outside of city jurisdiction, but working with maybe Caltrans or the county, could we get signs on the western side of, you know, the county on Highway 50 that says, you know, travel ban in place or?
I, I know that those are in place on, you know, the, the automatic overhead signs and messaging signs that Caltrans owns, those currently do say that.
Okay.
I'm trying to remember, there's a couple of them, I believe, in the western county, at least one. And I know just in Folsom, there's at least one more.
Okay. I guess I haven't been that way for a while.
All the way from Sacramento up, those, those Caltrans signs are asking us to stay home.
Okay.
Wash our hands and et cetera, so, yeah.
Vice Mayor Thomas.
Yes. I would be remiss in not acknowledging and expressing my sincere appreciation for the efforts that have been put in by our, by our Board of Supervisors, our, the CIO and the CIO's office, as well as the OES and Dr. Williams in working, I mean diligently, literally night and day to, to move this forward. There's a lot of people that just would like us to thumb our nose at the state. And while that's, that we can take dual, dual, dual tracks, the, probably the best track is to work with them at this point to get us to a place where we are, where we are now. And it is, it is not without their efforts and their diligence in, in really driving this. You know, while, while we kind of kick, kick the ball down, kick the ball off to begin with by passing our, or at least bringing it up and working on our letter, it was, it was going to, it was, it was going to fall on deaf ears without the cooperation and, and the efforts of the, of the county, of the CIO's office and the cooperation and the attention that was given from both Barton and Marshall Hospital. So it really was a valiant effort on their parts to, to move this ball down the field. And without them, honestly, we would not be one of the two first counties going out. And, and their efforts should be, should be well-recognized for what they did for our community.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Well said. At this point, I'm going to go ahead and open it up for public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As a reminder, if you are joining us by phone, please press star nine to indicate your desire to speak and you will be called upon using the last three digits of your phone number. If you're adjoining by your computer, use the raise hand option at the bottom of your screen. Please unmute yourself when called upon and voluntarily give your name for the record. And we will start with Barbara Roger.
Good evening, Barbara. Nope, you're still on mute, Barbara.
Got it?
Yep, we got you now.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
I just want to thank all of you for what you're doing. I no longer live in the city, but my son does and he has a hangtown skate shop. So I follow all of this very closely. And I agree with Dennis about other people coming in to our county and perhaps infecting us. And I will tell you, I work at Sam's Club in my retirement and I have seen such a change of the traffic on 50 going down the hill five days a week and coming back up the hill over the past four days. And even a change in attitudes of shoppers, more shoppers. And they're not wearing their masks and a lot of them are coming over from Costco because Costco is now requiring masks. So we can all be diligent, but we can't expect others to follow the rule. And that's what scares me. As selfish as I am that I want all of this to work, and I do, especially for the city, where I started my career 40-some years ago. It scares me too, but I know you guys have had a hard decision. I just want to thank you, you know, but we're, it's just going to be a wait-and-see game with people coming from the outside and what, we'll just have to wait and see what it brings. So that's all I have to say, but thank you.
Thank you, Barbara.
Now taking public comment from zero one one.
Good evening, Laurel Brent from Chamber of Commerce again. I, I, hi. I want to, I want to thank the city council. I want to recognize the county in the amazing heroic efforts that have come about in such a very short time to be able to move us not only into phase two, but into stage two of phase two. So that's, it's very, very exciting and we are very grateful and we're, we're happy to have been participating on those committees to be able to help move this forward. I just did want to go on record in letting the public know that the chamber site has a plethora of resource information that is updated on a daily basis. So that, those resources are available, frequently asked questions, applications, information, grant information. So that's all there and it's available to, to anyone, chamber member or not. Thank you.
Thank you, Laurel.
Now accepting public comment from Mandy R.
Good evening, Mandy.
Hey, guys. I promise I won't freak out tonight. I already freaked out earlier today. So, but I have been very vocal about what is going on. And I feel that our freedoms have been taken from us and they're slowly being eroded. And I'm, I, it really bothers me more than the virus. And the consensus that I've gotten over the last few weeks, especially the last two weeks in general, is a lot of people feel that way. And I, I've had people say, hey, you know what? At this point, I don't even care if I get the virus. And I know that sounds selfish and I don't necessarily feel that way. But I understand that, that people, we're social people. We want to be out, we want to be around people. And I have gone to some restaurants that opened that maybe weren't supposed to, quote unquote. But. But it was really strange, but it was kind of different because people, they stayed longer. They didn't want to leave. They wanted to be there. They wanted to be around people. And, and it felt, over all of this and this, just being blindsided by all this, just for people to have some normalcy back in their lives was really good psychologically. And so I, I honestly, I don't think you're gonna stop people from going out. You know, we were kind of bashed on at first that we were the last to close, like some of the bars and restaurants, they didn't want to close. So I kind of see us, us as the last to close, the first to open. So maybe some of our relaxed restrictions actually helped, helped us in slowing the spread and building herd immunity. I'm not a doctor, but you know, it sounds like you don't really have to be a doctor nowadays or an expert on anything to be correct, right? So I do thank you guys for your hard work and what you're doing. This consensus on the face mask, especially downtown, most restaurants don't have adequate air conditioning, we know that. So you're gonna put a cloth Petri dish on someone's face, expect a waiter to wash it, clean it. And it's gonna be hot. I mean, those restaurants can be 80 degrees. I mean, I, I'm looking at people passing out is what I'm seeing. So I think the consensus on the face mask, there's no, no data that really says that a cloth face mask is, is gonna help. So, and also you have hearing impaired people that read lips. They can't, they can't hear.
Fifteen seconds left.
So you're kind of restricting them too. So I would ask you guys to, to hold off on the face mask. The rest of the restrictions for restaurants seem pretty standard for safe serve practices anyways. So maybe just a little tighter on the cleanliness.
Thank you, Mandy.
Now taking public comment from Caitlin.
Hi, guys. It's Caitlin.
Good evening.
I, first of all, I just, hi. I just want to say that I feel the love as a business, as several business owner. I can really feel how much you guys care about us as I've been on all day with you guys. I'm really getting that there is genuine concern for us businesses and I just want to thank you for that. And just to add a little bit of my journey with this is, you know, I'm an Irish restaurant bar and it was, in the beginning, I was like, no, I don't think this is that serious. And then I was watching the news and I'm like, oh, this is really a serious, I got all worked up on how serious it is. And I had all my St. Patrick's Day and a band and all the food and I closed it up early. I'm like, no, 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 we're not doing that. So I went into, because I'd had pneumonia, I went into staying home, I wouldn't even go to the grocery store. And I'd, I'd make my honey scrub his shoes, like I was into it. And then when the data started to really come in and I started to take that into context with flus in the past, and it was showing once they did anti, the antibody test on people, so many people had had it, that they had broken it down to a point oh three percent that of survival, I mean of, of death rate, mortality rate. And I'm like, well, that makes it a 99.97%, if I'm calculating correctly, survival rate. And then that completely shifted something in, in me that there's, it just didn't make common sense to destroy our whole country and our livelihoods and scrubbing ourselves like crazy over a 99.97% survival rate. So it's all been a learning journey for all of us, but just coming back around to, I feel the love and thank you so much for having our backs. I appreciate you guys.
Thank you, Caitlin.
Now taking public comment from 857.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Can you hear me?
Yep. Good evening.
Hey, just a giant congratulations to all of you working with the county, getting this through the governor. I didn't really expect it. I, it's amazing, the amount of work you all have done. So going forward, if we're going to be allowing parking or eating in the parking spaces in front of businesses, you've got some ADA issues with the curb step down. I'm sure there can be a solution for that. I have noticed in my neighborhood, lots of car clubs, lots of motorcycle clubs, like 40, 50 vehicles coming through last weekend. But they're just passing through, zip. But they're gonna stop in some city. I was at a local store today and getting shoes that I needed desperately and they actually, if you didn't have a mask, you weren't coming in. So I understand individual businesses being able to require that. I have a question. Can a local business have like a locals-only sign? We will only serve locals. And you just like flash your ID that shows you live in out of county or something like that. Don't know, I don't think government could do that, but I just wonder if businesses could do that. I think I would rather be free, not stuck in my house, but be free to go out and make a living, purchase things and wear a mask and gloves and the hand cleaning. And kudos to Vice Mayor Thomas, what he said, ditto, across the board on that. And that was it. Can, can businesses demand locals-only service? That, that's just a question. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll look after public comment, a little bit more information on that.
Now accepting public comment from Sue.
Good evening, Sue.
Yeah, I had to wait for the mute button. So I appreciate kind of how the city is lax with the businesses and we don't feel like the CHP is gonna come in and arrest us. That's very comforting. You look at what's going on in our neighbor Sacramento and it's almost terrifying that that's, our CHP officers have been militarized. And it makes you really appreciate what we do have in the city and the county. But I, we just got these guidance, like the dining in, I just looked it up and it's kind of overwhelming. It's at least 12 pages of requirements. And, and this is kind of what concerns me is that you've got all these big stores that have been able to stay open without all of these regulations. And, and now you've got small businesses that's gonna try to open under this. And I'm looking at, just, there's just one thing here that I'll read. It says, this is training your employees now, that you have information on employer or government-sponsored leave benefits, the, these are things you have to tell them, that the leave benefits the employee may be entitled to receive that would make it financially easier to stay at home. See additional information on government programs supporting sick leave and workers' comp for COVID-19, including employee sick leave rights under the Families First Coronas Response Act and the Governor's Executed Order in 5120, and the employees' rights to workman's comp benefits and presumption of the work-related COVID pursuant to the Governor's Executive Order in 6220. That's just one out of probably over 20 things on this thing that you're gonna have to comply to. And what's scary, these are just, you know, they were just put on us without any really oversight or involvement by the public. And, and every time you know, when you create a law like this or a rule, it gives somebody an opportunity to file a lawsuit if you don't comply perfectly. And, and when I'm looking at these hundred or so items on here, it's just, it's not even almost doable to open if you really went by all the stuff that are on these documents. So I don't know how the city handle, it's just, you know, regulation for smaller businesses, it just seems like there's a difference between that and the large corporations who can actually absorb probably a lot of this. But it, I think that's the bigger fear of the opening for a business is that, those issues, you know, how is employees and the public going to relate with the business? And if something goes wrong, what's their liability? And I don't know how the city can address that, but it is, you know, yay, we have this now mega regulation document, but I'm not sure where we're gonna go from there. It's, it's almost like undoable to even make it worth opening. And then I was just gonna, the, the other thing I'm a little concerned about, we're getting a lot of people that really don't want to live, you know, they want to live in our public spaces without any, oh, responsibilities. And I, I was a little concerned when you mentioned that you've taken a couple that really didn't want to live by society's rules and packed them up to the hotel in Polypines, where they get free hotel, free food and free medical care without any regulations. So I don't know how, I, that's a COVID thing because it's tied to COVID funding, which is only gonna last for maybe three months at the most.
Thirty-two seconds, meaning so.
So, so that's another issue that's kind of becoming an issue downtown and for merchants. So I don't know how the city, it's been a long-term issue and it, and somehow I'm concerned that that's gonna continue and get worse. So anyway, thanks for your time.
Thank you, Sue.
There's no further public comment, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Regina. Okay, we'll bring it back to the council. Any other comments from colleagues? Yes, Councilmember Taylor.
So probably most of you all watched the Board of Supervisors' special meeting and maybe many in the audience too, and watched Dr. Nancy Williams' presentation on the variance satisfaction form that she submitted to the state. And I just wanted to comment that, for those that didn't watch it, it was really encouraging to see that a lot of the benchmarks that the state had set out as criteria for moving on to Stage Two, the county had already surpassed. I was really impressed by that, so I wanted to mention that. But, you know, I, I kind of, I can't, I'd like to feel really optimistic about reopening and I know that a lot of people, you know, some people feel very timid about it and some people are just really excited that we're reopening, but I can't really shake the feeling that we're all stuck between a rock and a hard place here. And Sue's comment really kind of brings that home is, you know, we are reopening, but things are gonna be very different. And I don't think that we're out of the woods yet. It's gonna be a big adjustment for the businesses. I'm excited for the restaurants that will be able to offer dine-in, but the reality of a restaurant operating at 50% or 30% capacity long-term, we just don't know what that's gonna look like in our town. So I just wanted to make that comment. I think we're taking a step in the right direction. I'm glad that we're kind of on the forefront of this and that the county's done such a great job in being able to make this presentation to the state and having the state agree that we're ready to move on to Stage Two. But it's definitely, we're, we're just starting the work of coming back from all of this. So it's gonna be a, a long road.
Thank you, Councilmember. Yes, Councilmember Acuna.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I'd also like to point out, thank you and Vice Mayor Thomas and Cleave Morris for your long dedication through the last month. People probably don't realize that you all have been attending meetings, probably a lot of them, with just a few minutes' notice. And it has been a collaborative effort that you have both done your parts to make sure that that collaboration worked and was successful and was prosperous. The relationship between our city manager and county CAO are, is simply outstanding and has paid dividends for, for both of our communities this past few weeks, well, for a long time, but it's very evident now. I would also like to thank the entire Board of Supervisors for their hard work. They have had many long extra meetings also, as they've addressed this at their level. We didn't know four weeks ago that the governor was going to make the counties the authority. And I think looking at the way it operates for the moment, that's probably a good idea because can you imagine if all of us cities tried to come in too? So he picked the largest denominator and said, the county was gonna be the lead. So we've learned a lot. You both have been instrumental in making that, making this move forward. Dr. Williams, I too have watched several of her presentations now and she has simply, her and her staff have done an outstanding job in standing behind the science, getting the documentation that the state wanted and presenting that information so that they're, it was transparent. It, it is a living document as, as Cleave has answered, she will continue to monitor, monitor all of our data as we open. So I, I would just want to say a big thank you to all of those folks. And as you, a couple of you have alluded to, we're not done yet. We have a lot, a long way to go yet. Just four weeks ago, when we suggested writing a letter and that got taken out of context, it created quite an emotional outpouring on both sides of this issue. And I think it's clear now that it was our intention, that we, we knew that it was a long road with many steps, many boxes we were gonna have to check. And the governor's office was the one that was writing the instruction book as we went. So I think we can be very proud as a community that we have reached these thresholds, we are following the scientific data, we now have our hospital, well, we always did, but we certainly now have our hospitals and responders poised, should something go wrong as we open, to react appropriately. I think their testing is now better than it was a couple of months ago, thankfully. I think that will help us also. But I share that there's still gonna be, there's a lot of hard work for those businesses that want to open. And I hope everybody feels comfortable in doing that. As I, as I mentioned, and as Dennis mentioned, you know, we were, we're a very popular destination and those folks are gonna want to come here and we're, we're gonna be prepared for how that impacts our community. We absolutely have to be on guard to respond as is required. I, I want to make just a one question to Cleave, and this is kind of a, a thing that does concern me and I don't think, we've been so focused as a community and as a nation, if there's any planning or if a second wave arrives, as, as we happen to have an early winter this year and cold and flu season comes back, I'm very concerned that I see such focus on trying to answer questions and place blame at a national level, that time is slipping by, that, that it's, well, I hope won't be, we won't regret that we aren't planning to have everything available for a second wave. Because I think what we've shown is that we did plan, we responded, and now our community is safe and we're hopefully making those steps forward. The other thing that I want to share that's been frustrating to me and I think is a, is an absolute insult to most of, or all of our business owners, and I will, I've come up with it tonight, I'm calling it the big box inequity. And somehow Walmart, Target and Costco and some others were able to provide some level of customer safety that stores on my Main Street, stores on Placerville Drive and stores on Broadway were, were ruled unable to provide. And I personally have witnessed the total act of social distancing, any personal protective equipment in these big stores. But yet, every one of our stores on Main Street, Broadway, Placerville Drive had to remain shut. And I think that that's just a real disgrace and unnecessary economic impact to all of those small business owners. So if this ever does happen again, the governor needs to spend the time to look at making sure that those stores are all on a level playing field, because it certainly was not leveled this time. And I commend all of those merchants that did follow the regulations and took the hard steps to remain closed, followed the orders that they were given, even though we all knew that this big, big box inequity was occurring every day while we remained closed. So I'm sorry for the damage that that has caused and I hope that it can be repaired quickly. And I again want to thank all of you and staff for all their hard work this last, last two months.
Thank you, Mark. Yes, Vice Mayor Thomas.
I wanted to thank Wendy Manicky Rodriguez. She, she, she worked to, to help facilitate a demonstration or a, just a, I wouldn't call it a demonstration, but a, a recognition of our personal freedoms and a little bit of a, gosh, I'm... gosh, I'm in a lack of words right now. With a lot of cars going up and down Main Street with their flags and being supportive. And honestly, I didn't agree with all of their messages, but I do agree with our right to do that, to assemble in that way. And they assembled in a very safe and meaningful way. And they also showed a lot of patriotism for our community and support for our businesses. Not only did they do that, but when they stopped, they got out and they went in and went to some of those places that were open downtown. So I think that, I appreciate that effort. On another note, I want to, I know Cleve is our, is our main conduit to the county. And I, and I want to encourage him to work with the county on stage three. You know, as we move through this, the reason that we are, that we were one of the first two counties to come open was we started before, we started ahead of time. And we worked hard to get that done, so that when we are, when we were ready, actually after, because I think we were ready a little bit before now. But we did what we needed to do, and the homework and all the hard work to open up now. And it's because of all that pre-planning and work that we did, that we kind of kicked off four weeks ago, made it possible for us to be here now. And so I want to encourage the county to also, to work on stage three, and I know they are. I know they pulled all-nighters to make this one work. And literally, I talked to them, they said they pulled all-nighters. It was crazy to make sure we were prepared for this one. So, so for stage three, I want to make sure that we're ready to go when that opportunity comes for us to do that. And that we have, if there's i's that we need to dot and t's we need to cross, we're, we're there. And if the city can do anything we can to help facilitate that, I think we should make every effort. So thank you for, let me make additional comments.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I'll just, my quick comments tonight. I want to thank Cleve for working with the county and for really ensuring that we had that partnership. And it really goes to, not just on this issue, but over a lot of things, that we have that nice working relationship with the county. I want to thank Supervisor Beer Camp and Dr. Williams and the rest of the board for working with us and for really allowing us to get to this point. It's, it's not by accident that we were the first of two, that we were the first two counties to be able to move to a full phase or stage, is it stage now? Stage two during this environment. And I just want to say, you know, it's still going to be, you know, it's still the responsibility of each person, whether or not they, they want to go out, whether businesses want to open. I know there's been some comments, and everybody will have to make that assessment in terms of whether they think it's in their best interest to, to open now that they have the ability to do so. It may not pencil out in some cases. The liability issue that Sue brought up, that, that is a, you know, hanging over everyone, I think, still. There hasn't been anything done at the state level to address overall liability issues if someone were to contract, or at least claim they contracted a COVID in your business establishment. I know Senator Dolly has brought this up and has talked about some legislative vehicle for that. And I thank him for that. But I don't know that, I mean, looking at the, at the crystal ball and what the, that legislature will do, I don't see, I'd have a hard time seeing them pass some kind of blanket immunity in terms of liability. I just don't see it. But I certainly will do everything I can to help Senator Dolly. But it's an uphill battle for sure on that front. And then for those that have underlying health concerns, I've received your emails and phone calls and texts. And, you know, I would say is, you know, it's a balancing act that the city has to do. Again, I said this before, it's, it's health and welfare. And that's not just our body health, but also our economic health. And if you have underlying health issues, you know, continue to, to stay in the Phase One protocols for yourself so that you stay protected. We want to make sure you stay healthy as well, for those that may have higher risks. It doesn't change, you can go out, but it isn't, certainly, you can still adhere to the Stage One protocols for yourself. And again, I think Councilmember Acuna was right. I mean, we want to encourage all those from out, out of our area to stay in their wonderful homes and counties during this time and not travel up here. But if they do, that we have necessary protocols and precautions in place from our businesses and from our counties so that we can mitigate potentially, you know, a virus coming into our community. And then I want to thank Marshall Medical for stepping up and for working with us and supporting what we were doing. I think that was critically important for us, for the governor's office, to see that as a county, we had all of our hospitals, all of our first responders, and our public health officer on board. It wasn't just us as council members or Board of Supervisors doing this, but it was informed through, through healthcare. I think that was critically important. So, you know, we will move forward here. The Vice Mayor's right, we want to move to Phase Three, you know, hopefully as quickly as we can, assuming everything goes right here on Stage Two. And for our restaurants, I know Cleve mentioned the ability to maybe do some outdoor dining. We're going to be working on that continuously to see what we can do there, as well as for other businesses that might be able to take advantage of that. So more to come. And I know it's a 12-page document for the restaurants, but I have very faith that their ingenuity and their ability to get through that. And then again, if they don't think it's in their best interest, then to continue to stay closed. So again, thank you, everybody, on this issue. I don't think we have, this is more of a file. We didn't have any other general direction for the staff unless a council member has something they want staff to follow up on.
Mayor, if I could, just quickly. I believe Councilmember Acuna asked me a question that you'd like me to follow up on that regarding the monitoring and what, what is the, how do we look forward in case there is, this does turn the wrong direction for us?
Yes.
That is part of the plan that was required to submit to the state that the county health officer had to attest to. And that monitoring and constant watching that to see where we're going. Hopefully that doesn't happen. But I think the plan is in place to, to require us to move back a step, unfortunately, if, if it does become serious and we see serious number increases here. So I think we are prepared for that. The other things I wanted, wanted to mention is regarding Phase Three, as was mentioned. I know that those discussions are, or Stage Three, those discussions are already, I've had some with the county officers already, and so that, that process is beginning to start. So yes, we will be prepared, assuming everything goes well. And we believe we are ready to move to another phase, and we will be prepared for that. And then the last thing, again, agreeing with you, as far as, yes, there are 12 pages of restaurant dine-in guidelines. But I think if you read through those closely, you can find that most of those are common items. Some of those are repeated as you go through there in different areas. And I think that hopefully regarding cleanliness and et cetera, most of those items restaurants are doing now, they have to, to protect themselves. It may just be a matter of maybe writing, yes, we do this, or documenting, more of a checklist, using, using that list as a checklist and simply saying, this is our plan, and checking that in initial, saying, yes, we do this. There are some things that they will have to do, and I think that's prudent for them to, to, to protect themselves. But along those lines, I want to emphasize that these are, as stated, these are guidelines. And I think if you go and look up the definition of a guideline, you can see that there is some, some flexibility in terms of how you apply those to your individual business, that's done on purpose, so that they can apply them to their needs and still be safe within this. So just want to add that.
Thank you, Cleve. And I'll just say one last thing, and that's what Councilmember Borelli said, I thought was really important. And that's with other counties around us being, having the same level of going to Phase or Stage Two completely, it should hopefully keep some of those folks back in their places. So I do feel a little bit better about that as well, in terms of people staying in their home counties. Okay. All right. Thank you, everybody, on that. We will now move on to item 12.2. And that is review options regarding cannabis appeal hearings and provide direction to staff on proceeding further. And I believe this is Mr. Morris, or is it going to be Mr. Driscoll first?
Actually, Mr. Driscoll will handle this. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I assume I'm unmuted.
You are.
Okay. Just by way of background, in April, the council adopted a resolution suspending the requirement that any appeals of the city manager's decision regarding commercial cannabis businesses, permits be heard within 90 days. As a result, we're in a situation where we don't know when those appeals are going to be heard because we're not getting back to normal, and it may be a long time before we get back to normal. There is interest in moving forward, in trying to issue the permits and getting these business operative. And so staff thought it would be appropriate to bring to council some discussion or consideration of how we could move forward with respect to the cannabis permits and the operations of those businesses. What this, what this is not about is the appeals themselves. And I have to state that we should avoid any discussion of the merits of the appeals, both at the council level and the speaker level. I would ask all the speakers who address this item, do not get into the merits of the appeal, but simply focus on the issues in front of the council, which are, how do we move forward? One of which, the option is to go ahead and set the hearings with the idea that we would have to have the hearings in some sort of a format potentially like this, which would make them obviously more difficult and probably take a little longer to actually have them heard. Or do we remain in the status quo and wait till something happens? That's one issue before the council. The other and separate issue is in fact whether the council wants to consider possibility of issuing or authorizing the issuance of more permits. I'd like to just discuss the first issue at this point, and that is whether or not we want to move forward. Again, it's very difficult for some of these businesses, some of them have prob, or some of the applicants, I should say. Some of them may have lost their locations. Some of them are paying rent to maintain their locations without an end in sight as to knowing when they would be able to operate while these appeals are pending. So staff is at the point where we are requesting that council consider setting a hearing date for these appeals, not setting that date tonight, but perhaps at the next council meeting, in order to allow staff to come, come back with some potential dates, and also present to council a little more background as to how these hearings would take place. You know, we had some technical difficulties at the start of the meeting tonight, and we'd like to make sure we can get through those and have the meetings, the appeal hearings go as smoothly as possible. We anticipate that we would set a separate day, special council meeting, to hear these appeals. And we would actually schedule most of the day. There are four appeals, and each one is entitled to due process and to a full hearing. Not only were the appellants presenting their, their cases, but the people or entities who are the subject of those appeals would be able to present theirs and respond to the allegations as to why they should not have been granted a permit. Also, all the other applicants are potentially affected by this. So they would have the opportunity to speak. So obviously, there's a great many people that we may need to hear from on those appeal hearings. Going through a format like this may be difficult, but it may be something that needs to be done in order to get this matter moved. The option, of course, is to stay with the status quo and wait and see until we get to a point where we could do it under a more normal council setting. As I said, our staff's recommendation is to at least explore the, the ability of setting a hearing date and look at the issues that we would have to deal with in order to make that hearing go as smoothly as possible. Bring that information back to the council when a decision could be made as to a hearing date. So we're looking for direction from councils to do that sort of thing. The second issue before the council tonight is whether or not you want to consider the possibility of authorizing additional permits in the future. That has come up because some interested parties have suggested that. In fact, I believe the two written communications that the council received on this matter are both advocating that the council consider issuing additional permits. That could only be, that cannot be done tonight, let's put it that way. That can only be done, I believe, on a fully noticed hearing where all the applicants who have applied up till now would get notice of that, have an opportunity to be heard, as well as the appellants and, and those who were potentially selected. That hearing, again, could take place as early as a couple of weeks, or maybe a little longer, depending on what is necessary to get the information to the council to make a decision as to whether you want to go in that direction or not. And what I mean by that is information concerning, I think it would be important to know the status of the applicants, what changes have occurred in their processes and their location, what their operation would be as a result of this hiatus, and are they even still interested in, in pursuing this at this point because of what's been going on? That information, I think, would be very important to know. I think proceeding on a parallel track with both the idea of potentially setting a hearing date for these appeals and at the same time exploring the option of additional permits could serve to benefit and be of value to both of those issues, quite frankly. Again, we want to be very careful in this whole process that with these appeals pending, that the appellants and the, all of the applicants get due process with respect to the issues created in that appeal. Issuing more permits may not solve the appeal process, and it shouldn't be viewed as that. It should be viewed independently in terms of whether or not you want to proceed in that direction or not. I think that's kind of an overview. I've tried to keep it somewhat short, but if you have questions, I'd be more than happy to try and answer them, too.
Okay. Thank you, John. At this point, council members, do you have any questions for staff? Yes, Councilmember Taylor?
Just to clarify, for the public as well, what we're doing today with this agenda item is just providing direction to staff on which options we would be interested in having more information brought back to the council and a decision at a later date. We would, we would not be authorizing issuance of additional cannabis permits tonight or deciding on any number of what that would look like. Or we would not be setting a date for a certain appeal. At this point, we would just be giving direction to staff to pursue these things in the next week or two.
That's correct.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you, Kara, for the clarification. Okay, seeing other questions right now, I'm going to go ahead and open it up for public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We'll now accept public comment from 857.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Can you hear me?
Yes. Good evening.
Okay, so what we have here is a slew of businesses that haven't even started yet and we're concerned about their economic vitality. When we have existing businesses that we really should be concerned about their economic vitality? I was concerned when the city extended the appeals process, which was codified. It was in the code, correct? Correct me if I'm wrong. So the other concern I have with a governmental position is that the city just suspended one of its codified codes by resolution and one vote and postponed it. It's understood. I mean, this is, it's not an act of God, it's an act of China. So I would say everyone understands that we're all hovering right now. Everything's being postponed. These businesses that have not yet even started, I do not shed a tear if they're losing their lease option. That is, that's a business risk. You postpone the hearings. I don't understand why you can't have the hearings on a special day solely dedicated to this issue only. This electronic system seems to work just good enough. But I do not want to see you tonight issue permits for all applicants. That would really get under my hide. So that's, that's my thoughts on it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now accepting public comment from Kelly Chisano.
Good evening, Kelly.
Hello. Can you hear me?
Yep, we got you.
Okay, great. Thank you all for being here tonight and hearing us and getting through this. As you all know, I'm As you all know, I'm the one of the owners of Sacred Roots, which was the first, they're the top, one of the scoring. Applicants. We are one of the people being appealed. And my feelings on it are because of the. I've been in similar meetings with the cannabis issues with the county recently. And a lot of the public's view was that these Zoom meetings. Were kind of confusing or difficult to access for some people. There was a lot lost in translation and not being in person and being able to present. In person kind of argument or and these I assume from reading these appeals. It's going to be very lengthy. There's going to be a lot of people. They're going to want to comment on it. And I just want to make sure that everyone gets the proper channel to do so. So my vote. My opinion is the best option and you know, for us, we're happy to keep paying our lease and happy to keep. You know, waiting and hovering along with everybody else and just move along with the status quo. For a couple of reasons, it's the cheapest option for the city. It keeps everybody safe and it gives everybody full. Fairness in those that those there is no. Question at a later date if those Zoom hearings were quite qualified to. Hold the same status as a actual hearing. I don't know where that stands. I know that my opinion on offering more permits. Is a, I think is a bad idea in that the. The city originally, I believe, was humming and hawing one or two, maybe three permits. So hearing the idea of opening up for even for anymore, I don't believe that was the. At least the original board's original intention. I know that that continues to change, but. I I don't know that the city will necessarily be able to support. Much more than three of these types of businesses in the first year at least. Not to say that in the future, there might not be room for it. But I think that we want to make sure that the businesses that we do start. Have a chance to succeed and we don't have so much competition. That we have a bunch of okay businesses and not successful businesses. I. I appreciate all you taking the time to hear me. Again, so I'd like to stay with status quo and no additional permits. Like I said, we are happy to continue to wait and I appreciate all the work that. Mr. Driscoll, Mr. Morris and the city council mayor, everybody involved has put into this. I know that it has been a long process. But good things come to those who wait.
Thank you, Kelly.
Now accepting public comment from Josh two four seven.
Evening, Josh.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Michael. Honorable mayor, council members, city staff. Yes, my name is Josh Black with Element Seven. We were the second highest score in the city based on the interview and the written component and we obviously appealed. After not being issued a permit. We are still in control of our location and happy to pay rent each month to the local, the local owner. And look, we would continue to just work with the city as we've done for the last 12 months. If the decision was made to have a public face to face hearing, we would support that. If the decision was made to issue. Multiple additional permits, we would be happy with that as well and. You know, would. You know, I think, I think we just want to bring jobs and taxes and economic development to the city at a time that obviously needs it and. Would continue to support, continue to support the great city.
Great, thank you, Josh. Council member Taylor, you had a.
Yeah, sorry, my audio was kind of cutting out and I feel like those comments were really important. And it was just coming in and out, so. Could I get a recap? Sorry.
Mayor, I could if you'd like me to summarize basically what I heard is they would support any of the three auctions. Council member Taylor that the city comes up with. They want to support the city and whatever determination the council makes, they would support that.
Okay.
And all this that they they said there can they have their same site and they're continuing to pay rent there. That was the only other I can think of that that was in that in those comments.
Mr. Mayor, I have a a public comment that was submitted for me to read into the record tonight.
Okay.
So this is from Max Del Real. He writes, Dear Mayor Saragossa and City Council Members, good evening. I am writing today in support of item 12.2. On the cannabis issue. Yesterday, I emailed you a formal letter representing my team, Trees Placerville, and our position on the matter. We strongly urge you to support option two in the city manager's report. A vote to authorize the issuance of additional cannabis permits in the city of Placerville. Is a vote in favor of new jobs, added public safety and increased economic development and new tax dollars to the city. Please vote yes on option two. It is a win win for the city and for new business. Thank you for your leadership in the city of Placerville. Best.
Thank you, Regina.
You're welcome. And there is one more comment. I will hear from Annie.
Good evening, Annie.
Hi. This is Annie Aubrey, owner of multiple commercial buildings on Broadway. I'm the CEO of Chuck's Wellness Center. Who was an original applicant winner of one of the permits to operate in town. Given the guidelines that have been presented, we've done everything to follow the rules that have been set month many months ago. We believe changing from three to seven dispensaries at this stage is a discredit to everybody. And the application process that we've all agreed to comply with. We've put in over six figures, months and years into creating something unique and special for our community. The time and the effort that's gone into the process has been a true dedication of love and sacrifice. And we think we should keep to the process. We've all signed up for when this application opened, which was three dispensaries. We've been doing this a very long time and suggest not changing the process at this stage. I was there the night the city council voted for three. Two seemed to be the number that would have the most success in town. But having a third created fair competition and an option for the community to choose who they wanted to frequent. If I remember correctly, only three council members wanted the three and two of the council members wanted less than three. No persons wanted any more than that. I believe seven dispensaries would potentially make it so none of the dispensary applicants can survive in the long run. I also don't know how many of us would have applied originally and put in the effort we had. If we had the foresight that we would have six other dispensaries to compete with in a relatively small market. There are not even seven grocery stores in town, close to the same amount of schools, even less liquor stores. And seven dispensaries for a single market in a small community would likely be overkill. For the community and the business owners alike. This has been discussed at length in previous meetings when three was determined as appropriate number for our community. I do support whatever the community or the council decides tonight. As I believe we're here today in a position we are because what we have to offer as a business is unique. Education and community based and has the best chance of survival. And we are committed to the long haul. I own the business. We are working towards remodeling and restoring it regardless. We're going to see this through however the council proceeds. We do think proceeding with these hearings, because this has been such an extensive process. Is the one we favor and ask you to consider as your top priority too. This way we can get moving forward, start working in the community, start creating revenue for the town as soon as possible. Get those jobs, get working with these people that need this medicine. And I hope you support that too tonight. We look forward to seeing your faces in person again soon and I thank you all for all you've done to get us here today.
Thank you, Annie.
Now taking public comment from Kimberly Cargile.
Good evening, Kimberly. Kimberly, you're on mute still.
Thank you for letting me know that. Okay.
We got to know.
Council, city manager, city attorney and all the hardworking staff on this call tonight. My name is Kimberly Cargile. I'm a founder and board member of Chuck's Wellness Center located at thirteen eighteen Broadway. We have been chosen to provide Placerville with a unique fifty style dispensary that will cater to seniors. My partner Annie Aubrey has purchased the old Chuck's building. Over a year ago and we've been putting in a great effort to restore it to its previous glory. We've been coming to city council meetings with cannabis on the agenda for almost two years now. This process has been extensive and expensive for us as well as for the city. We're here to tonight, tonight to support your decision, no matter what you choose. However, we do encourage a vote in favor of option one to move forward with the process. And hear all the appeals in a special meeting. The community is looking forward to the opening of the dispensaries in Placerville. And we are looking forward to restoring this historical landmark. And last but not least, just thank you so much for everything each of you does to make Placerville the wonderful place that it is.
Thank you, Kimberly.
No further public comment, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Regina. Okay, I'll bring it back to the council for further discussion. So from, oh, go go ahead, Patty.
I'd like to ask. Mr. Driscoll, would you repeat again that you what you said we could do? As a trial or to see if it would work or what did you say? That we, in other words, if we decided to do the Zoom method. You said that we could look into doing some certain things to see if it would. If we could make it work. I can't remember just exactly how you said it.
If you decide to potentially set some dates and proceed with a Zoom type hearing. We would have to make sure that we could do that. And so that everybody could be heard, everybody would get an opportunity. It would be much like what we're doing tonight. I don't know if there's any. I haven't talked to Cleve about this. I don't know if there's any enhancements or other things that we could do. To perhaps make it flow a little better at times. Because as speakers have said, it's going to be a long, a long day. But we would come back with some information as to how the hearings would proceed, some potential dates, that type of thing.
Okay.
I guess council member Taylor.
You know, I. I really feel for the businesses that have been going through this delay, all of the applicants and the parents. It's, I just know how frustrating and difficult delays are when you're trying to open up a business and. I definitely would like to see this process. Move forward in a, you know, a reasonable amount of time. I really appreciate all the public comment. When I. First read this, I was thinking, you know, option one and option two. And the public comments has given new perspective of what the businesses think would be in their own best interest. So I appreciate everyone that spoke on this tonight.
Thank you. Well, I think we have a, yes, council member Acuna.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, I would like to thank the public comment. I think it was very well focused and I appreciate the the honest opinions. And I think most of that was from applicants who waited patiently. And this has been a multi-year process now. And it seems appropriate that we follow the rules that we set forward. We are getting a little better at Zoom. I think this, the idea of having a special set of, it's a day set aside for those hearings, I think is. Absolutely what would need to happen. Might I suggest that we look at perhaps using some sort of a modified. Process to where. The council would go back to Town Hall, invite just the applicants in. And whatever the great legal mind of Mr. Driscoll and Mr. Morris decide is the appropriate number of the opponents. To represent their case, move forward with the appeal process. Allowing the public to use Zoom to come in and out of that meeting. That way we can get a little bit better of a feel because this is a, this is an emotion, but there's, there's an emotional issue, just like most of these are. Seems like. As Kara pointed out, people have got a lot of time invested in this right now. So I think it would be appropriate. Since we are in stage two of two. To move back into our chambers at some point. This seems like a good reason to do it. And combine technology with allowing the opponents. And the appropriate folks to actually be before the council socially distance, of course. Again, we wouldn't have the public there. We would ask them to still participate via Zoom. We wouldn't have any unnecessary staff member or any person that didn't feel comfortable, certainly allowing them to work via Zoom. But we need to move forward with this and and here this appeals.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mark. Did he? I don't know if you got cut off or if you had more to.
No.
Okay.
Sorry. Well, I have a, I have a comment regarding the. The concept of an additional licenses.
Yes.
Do you want me to share that now or wait till we decide?
No, go ahead.
Oh, okay. Oh, well then I would just, it's. Again, to be fair to the process that we've set forward and worked so hard on. The council could certainly consider a future meeting, the idea of expanding the number of licenses. I think if we were to do that, it would certainly require a completely new application process. So that everybody would have an opportunity to decide whether or not they wanted to. If the council increased the number of permits, then they would. Everybody would have the level playing field with the knowledge of what the market is going to be, the total number. Of licenses that would be available citywide, etc. I would support us doing that at some point in the future.
Thank you, Mark. I guess Vice Mayor.
I would like to apologize for my phone going off. I muted it, but it didn't mute on my computer and I should have muted myself. Anyway, apologies. I would like to. Move, well, no, I'm gonna, actually, I'm gonna hold off on that right now. Go ahead. Sorry.
Council member Borelli.
Yes, I, and I have to confess, I was one of the ones that called Cleveland, suggested if there's any way, shape or form that we go ahead with this. Particularly in view of all the economic problems that we're having, etc. That we're well aware that this, this type of business is going to add to our economy and. It's, I think it's going to be a long process and I think the longer we wait. And if we can find a way to start, you know, get back on board and get things started, I think it's, we should do it. And I like Mark's idea and if it's, if it's okay, I noticed that in this. Phase two, they did, they said something about offices. Maybe we would come under that category, but I think the way Mark. Outlined it that I don't see why that couldn't be done.
Thank you, Patty.
I'm in favor of going forward with this.
Yes, Vice Mayor.
I'm ready. I would like to move that we move forward with setting a date. And asking staff to come back with a, with an idea of what the process looks like and setting a date for that process as well.
I'll second.
Okay, as well as.
Oh, sorry.
Considering, considering what it looks like for additional, you know, two parallel paths, considering what it looks like. For additional licenses as well.
So council member Borelli, do you, would you still second that with the the added? Part of looking into the potentiality of other licenses?
Well, I'm not in favor. I'll tell you right now, I don't, and I mean, I'm not in favor of issuing anymore, but I have to. Because I have to take. Mark's edit and then also the lady that called in and well, a couple of them. This is not what they signed up for and I I think that's kind of switching oars in the, out in the middle of the. the, out in the middle of the lake, and I, I would not be in favor of issuing any new ones at this time. Maybe after, you know, we get this thing going, if it proves successful and we see a need that we need four more, fine, but not right now. So I'm not sure I could second it because I, I'm not in favor of it, so.
Okay. Councilmember Taylor.
I was on the committee that interviewed the applicants. I can say I agree with Patty and Mark with their concerns. I'm not opposed to the council considering it, although it might be a waste of staff time to research it, because just being on the committee interviewing the applicants, a lot of people were interested in Placerville because it was a limited market, whereas other counties and cities had, you know, 40 cannabis stores or something like that. So I, I do think it, you know, changing the rules midway through is unfair to the applicants. So I don't know if it's worth pursuing and spending the staff time to go down that route if it doesn't seem like there's a chance of the council having consensus on that.
All right, I'll withdraw my, my motion and, and just go ahead and move to go forward with setting the dates and considering what it looks like to, well, setting dates.
Okay, I'll second that.
Okay, we have a first and a second. I know Councilmember Acuna had a comment.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was gonna go ahead and second your original motion, Dennis. I think we could direct, staff has been, is so well-versed in this subject now that as we move forward with, once they move forward to prepare the, the appeals, that they will also know, I would think probably fairly easy, whether we wanted to look at another round of applicants and, and, you know, and another, an increased number of licenses. All of that, of course, would take place after this was all finished. So there's, there's time in there, I think, that staff could report back to us. Oh, man, I forgot, Cara, you, you had a lot of time invested in those interviews.
Yeah, she did.
With all those applicants, and so I would just want to give staff the flexibility this evening so that they can go out and get us the best answer.
Yeah, I would concur with what Councilmember Acuna said. I think if we look at this and we look at where appeals may or may not go, I think it's best for us to have a full picture of what we, of what, where we may go with all this. I know I was one of the originals on this that, that said two of these. I think that was a three-two vote. So I'm, I was not a fan of having, you know, a lot of these, but at the same time, we're at where we are at today, and I think it, it doesn't hurt for us to look at all of our options here, you know, as we move forward. This is sort of uncharted territory, and I think, you know, let's, let's let staff come back to us with, you know, other, other options potentially, which would include, you know, potentially more, more licenses.
Mayor, if I, if I could, just for clarification, is, is what I heard happened here, you have a mayor or a motion and a second that includes just option one at this time. So technically, that is what is on the floor unless, so either call for a vote unless the motion maker wants to withdraw that motion. Oh, I'll, I'll withdraw that motion.
I'll withdraw my second.
Mark, why don't you take a shot at it?
What happened there? We were ready for a roll call vote. All right, I'll go ahead and make a motion to ask staff to prepare and begin to set the process for the appeal hearings for the four pending appeals, using a combination of Zoom and in-person meeting technology, and also ask staff to agendize for future consideration, review of any change in the number of permits in the city, which would include a new application process.
No, I'll second that.
And just to clarify, this is not approving more licenses at this point, just the consideration of more licenses at a future meeting.
Correct.
Correct. Further discussion on the motion.
Did you get a second for that?
I, yeah, I seconded it.
Okay.
Okay, seeing no other, I will go ahead and ask for a roll call vote.
Mayor Saragosa.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Thomas.
Aye.
Councilmember Acuna.
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli.
No.
Councilmember Taylor.
Aye.
Okay, that measure passes for one. Thank you, everybody. All right, we're gonna move ahead. I'll be asked, council, again, is anybody want to power through or do you want, you want a five-minute break? What's the will of the?
Can we have a five-minute break, Mr. Mayor?
Absolutely.
Exactly. Nine o'clock, I promise.
All right, let's, we will be back at nine, we'll do a quick break. Thank you, everyone. All right. Okay, then, moving on to item 12.3. Adopt a resolution approving a lease agreement with the Hangtown Certified Farmer's Market to conduct the farmer's market at the Tetral parking lot on Sundays and authorize the city manager to execute the same. And Mr. Zeller has this report today.
Good, good evening, Mayor and council. Today, you have before you a request to adopt a resolution, and it's considering the approval of a lease to resume a farmer's market for Sundays as a replacement for the former SOL market. And we had an applicant, I was working with the original operator, but they had stopped communicating with me. I had a second application from a Mr. Dan Harland, who is the subject of this piece of business tonight. And since there wasn't any response from the original operator, Mr. Harland, who's a local grower, submitted his application also. He's got all his permits, he's a certified operator, and he's also taken on all the risk of the success or failure of this enterprise. And in the report, you can see he was looking for a preference at the Bell Tower. I had discussed with him, the staff and the council's interest in trying to reduce use of closure of Main Street as much as possible, but his second preference was that the Tetral lot, where the, where the market has been for the last five years. So the lease agreement would be the same as the 2018 lease agreement that is attached to your staff report, and I can answer questions on that. Also, the timeframe is the same as has been with the, with the market at the Tetral lot, and Mr. Harland has also been in close communication with the county to make sure that he's following all of the rules and regulations for COVID-19. So there isn't any expected budget impact from this lease agreement, it's the same amount per month as before. And so I can take any questions on this resolution or the agreements or any history on that.
Thank you, Terry. Questions for Mr. Zeller at this point? Miss? Okay, seeing none. Oh, Councilmember Taylor.
Terry, are there other farmer's markets on Sunday?
There is another farmer's market. The time, the timeframe went like this. I was working with the original operator on the Tetral lot. That operator stopped communicating with me, and I felt after a certain amount of time that I needed to move on with another applicant who was responsive. And after I picked up the application of Mr. Harland to take over the Tetral lot, the original operator moved forward with getting a temporary use permit for the lot that's out by the Sherwin-Williams and on Broadway. So it's on the other side of town, and they did start their market, I think, last Sunday was their first one. So there would be two markets on a, on a Sunday.
Okay. And then Cleve, did you say that there is also a Sunday market at Marshall Hospital?
I actually learned today that Marshall Hospital, a representative there, applied for a permit for a Sunday farmer's market. I understand that Mr. Rivas approved that temporary use permit today, again, on private property only, or also, so it only required a TUP. Of course, we are enforcing, and as part of the TUP, they're required to uphold all of the conditions under COVID-19 for a farmer's market. Mr. Rivas is on the call. Pierre, if you could pop on and confirm that, that they have, that has been issued, and it is for Marshall, at Marshall Hospital on Sunday mornings at the same time.
We just recently approved two temporary use permits for a farmer's market. The one market is for what's called the SOL community market. That is a Sunday market, and it's 681 Main Street, what used to be known as Midtown Mall. That's where Marshall Hospital had their lab, so that's a parking lot, sort of by farmer's market. The other market that Mr. Morris was referring to, we just approved today, that's a, the applicant for that one is El Dorado Farms Trail, and that's a Friday farmer's market to serve the employees at Marshall Hospital. And so that will be a Friday only from 9:00 a.m. until 1:00 p.m. at Marshall Hospital next to their emergency building.
Thank you, Pierre. Sorry, sorry if I'm confused, I was thinking it was on Sunday also, so it is on the Friday spot on Sunday.
No, no, no problem, I just sent it out today, so you probably just got wind of it today.
Councilmember Acuna.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good to see your Mr. Rivas on the call, brings a couple of questions in mind regarding all these various markets. And in the past, there has been some concern that they are allowed a percentage of non-farm-related items, and it has run the gamut to crafts, candles, soap, olive oil. I don't think we've had alcoholic sales in the past, I know we've had jewelry, clothing, et cetera. My concern for many years has been how this, this competes with our brick and mortar stores throughout the various business district. Pierre, with what we're approving with these, the two that you've mentioned on private property, is there any way for the city to restrict what they can sell?
That's a little difficult. I know in the past, we've issued temporary use permits for the Midtown Mall for basically almost a flea market, where they can sell all kinds of different things. So we're not really overly regulatory in terms of what they're permitted to sell. If they state that they're a certified farmer's market, then we leave that to other agencies. In other words, if they're a certified farmer's market, they have to have a certificate from El Dorado County Department of Agriculture. If they're selling food, if there's any kind of food preparation, then they're required to have the appropriate permits from El Dorado County Environmental Management Department. But we're not very restrictive in terms of telling them what they can sell at these markets.
Okay, thank you for that. This, this concern applies to the markets this year, really, because all, we have businesses that have been, that are still closed on Main Street and Broadway and Placerville Drive, and we are bringing in farmer's markets. Let's see now, we'll have Wednesdays, Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays. And in the past, we either haven't restricted it if it was in a city lot, or we, as Pierre points out, it's very difficult to enforce. They have a percentage of just goods for sale. Sales tax is never collected on these items because it's just too difficult. Mr. Warren does not have the staff to go out and patrol. We have tried that in the past. And specifically, the past operator at the Tetral lot, there was a long history of, it was pretty much if you gave that person $10 or $20 for your stall, you were in, including last year during the Antique Street Fair, where she advertised throughout the Sacramento region, $10 a stall to sell antiques, while PDA was trying to raise funds by charging, I believe it was $150 or $200 for a stall on Main Street. And, and I know of several antique dealers in Sacramento that took, took advantage of a $10 stall in the Tetral lot and took advantage of that, of that example. And of course, that was not in the written regulations, but again, we had no way to enforce it. So with, with these, these additional farmer's markets this year, I'm concerned that it's really unfair to somebody that's selling jewelry on Main Street and handmade jewelry to be competing against somebody that's paying $10 a stall on a Sunday to come to the Tetral law, no overhead, no sales tax collected, et cetera. So I will keep my comment to that for a moment.
Thank you, Mark. I saw Councilmember Taylor had her hand up.
Yeah, I was a farmer's market vendor for six years locally, and ultimately, I stopped because more and more markets started opening up, and there was a pressure to spend more time going to all these markets and, which gave me less time to produce my goods. And I, I just really, you know, that experience of being a market vendor and also a longtime market shopper is, I really do believe that it's in the best interest of shoppers, vendors, and the downtown to have large, successful markets instead of a whole bunch of really small markets that compete with each other and force farmers and vendors to have to spend more time selling and less time creating or growing. So I'm not really in favor of adding more markets, especially when I hear that two other ones were just approved.
Thank you, Cara. A question for either Terry or Pierre. Do, are all the, well, I guess in this case, for the one before us, are they all aware of the other markets that are out there in terms of just their viability? I don't, I mean, I wasn't even aware of the Marshall one until today. And I know they're different days now, which is a little bit better, but still, in, in terms of whether or not these are viable markets to, to Cara's firsthand experience selling at these.
Well, I can try to answer, Mr. Mayor. The, 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 the operator who has, who I'm, who I wrote the staff report for this application, he was aware that the, that the applicant or the operator, the former Tetral lot, the SOL operator, was trying to reconstitute a market, and he was aware that I was working with her, and he is completely aware that, he, he feels he has the, the amount of local vendors that he needs. He said that he has the majority of the folks that had presented at the market in the past, and he wanted to pick it up, basically, and he, he feels he'll have a lot of the same vendors. And like I said, he's taking on the risk of this venture himself. He had to put a lot of effort into the certificates and, and pay in the fees in order to move forward. And so my opinion throughout this was not to try to be the arbitrator of how many farmer's markets we have, but I feel that those, those folks have the ability to understand their market and to let, not to use a pun, but let the market decide how those, how those operate. If they are not successful within a year or so, these are, this is a one-year renewable lease that we have here. And to speak to some of the other concerns, there is the ability, I think, item 3A of the lease stalls out what folks can sell at these items, and that includes value-added items and other things. If there was some interest in trying to narrow that scope, that's also part of the option of the council for tonight.
Terry, a quick question on that. I, and I'm not sure where I remember this from, but I thought there was actually state guidelines now about non, I guess, non-food products at farmer's markets. Is, I could have completely got that wrong, but I, I thought there was some state guidance on that now anyways. I could have completely got that wrong, but I, I thought there was some state guidance on that now anyways.
Yeah, the, I think there's some, there's some guidance on that with the county ag and the state. I don't have that specific reference to me right now, but I do know that it calls out agricultural products, prepared foods, artisan items and outdoor products. So, and the lease itself actually says, let me open it up real quick here. It says, "The intent of this lease is to provide the location for a certified Farmer's Market selling homegrown, homemade, handmade and forged certifiable and non-certifiable agricultural products, value-added items, artisan craft items, prepared hot and cold food items, outdoor products, kitchen, home and garden items and more, according to the tenant's 2020 market rules." That's what it says.
Okay, thank you.
It says, yeah. So there's, there's some understanding that they have to bring some of the, some of those in in order to provide a better market experience for folks. But I do understand the intent of what the council is trying to get at, which is competition with our brick and mortar folks downtown.
I'm gonna, oh, yes, Councilmember Morelli.
Well, I'm, I'm just reading along with what Terry was reading and it, what he did read is, and it, he kind of, it is understood that some non-artisanal merchants may enhance the market and their participation defrays expenses from the farmers. The market management will maintain a market mix hosting only Eldorado County businesses and residents owning farms, homesteads, and, I mean, it just keeps going on and on. And I think this is just an open book. I mean, to me, anybody can, they can sell anything. I mean, if you really want to look at this and, and get away with it, and I wholeheartedly agree with Mark, and I've said it for a long, long time. To me, a Farmer's Market is a Farmer's Market. And it kind of connotates to me that it's, it's produce and, you know, food-type products. And I, I don't go to a Farmer's Market to buy jewelry and, you know, things that I, I saw being sold, and I, I just don't understand why it's being allowed. And if we have a chance and there is a possibility that we can rewrite these rules, I really would like to submit that we do. Like I, and I, like I say, the, the, are we, you know, maybe the businesses down, down don't sell a lot of homemade jewelry. I don't know. Maybe they, they don't sell a lot of this stuff, but it's just the idea of the thing that we've got all these businesses downtown that have been closed for two months. They're all paying us sales tax, which we live and die by. We've heard the report from Mr. Warren tonight about the dire straits that we're in, and then we allow this. I, I, I'm kind of, it's, you know, it's a, I, I just not in favor of all these sales that are going on there.
Thank you, Patty. I think at this point, I want to open it up for a public comment. See if, and see if we have any, and then we can further this discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Now accepting public comment from 857.
Good evening, Councilman Mayor. Take, are you gonna hear me?
Yep.
So I'm, I'm concerned about these markets getting temporary use permits. And from memory, they're in the $150 to $200 range, I guess, for a one-time event. The competition against, I'm all for competition, but unfair competition with the brick and mortar peoples paying thousands of dollars of rent locked into leases. The, to me, the market's getting a one-month $100 fee. That's all they're, they're making out like bandits. They're charging these stalls 10 to 20 bucks each. These market operators are getting a sweetheart deal from the city at 100 bucks a month. I think you need to raise the rate to where it is comparable to them having, we want to encourage small business to grow. If these businesses, what they need to do is they need to get into a conglomerate, come together, rent a place on Main Street and sell their wares and their goods. Getting back to if they can advertise it as a Farmer's Market, I think the city could set a rule where 95% of the stalls have to be edibles. 5% can be arts and crafts. If you can't meet that threshold, you can only advertise yourself as a craft market. Lots of thoughts on that, but I think the low price that's being offered to these Farmer's Markets operators is going to be hurting our brick and mortar businesses at a time when they're already hurting. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you for the comments.
Now taking public comment from Sue.
Hi, Sue Taylor. Thank you. I just had a grandson jump on me to say goodnight, sorry. Being at home. I appreciate that you are standing up for the brick and mortar. I've appreciated the comments and I've kind of lost track. I, I was just kind of half-listening, but how many markets are we talking about that are being approved currently? It, it seemed like quite a bit that kind of dilutes. I don't know if you can limit how many of those are going on, but, or as you said, what they're selling, it seems like fresh food seem, seems to be okay or working out all right, the Wednesday market. But all of these that you're mentioning now just seems like, it, it sounds like they're starting to encroach on a lot of what the downtown merchants sell themselves and, and like was said, that it's kind of a rough time to bring, bringing in competition that's not even really balanced. So I appreciate those comments and I hope that you come out with something that protects the downtown when you kind of finish this. So, thank you.
Thank you, Sue.
Now taking public comment from 846.
Hi, it's Jennifer.
Hi, Jennifer.
I, I am a little, I think I'm a little bit confused because, you know, it's a little bit similar. I, I don't know how it works. I guess things that seem like they need to be thought about is, you know, existing long-term, kind of past practice, the idea of past practice, and if there's a very established Farmer's Market like the one on the next agenda item, you know, that's the Saturday one, I guess. But, but, you know, it, it, because partly it sounds like you're talking about the issue of what can they sell? It also sounds like there's just a, a broad sense of adding new ones, which, you know, I, I think you'd have a good rationale if, if it's a new one to hold off if, for no other reason, just for the COVID, you know, stress that you've talked about already. But it, it does seem to me that you should be able to, to control the, you know, the, the goods that are sold. And I, I guess I, it, I, I guess I'll just say that as far as the brick and mortar topic, you know, it, it doesn't seem to me that produce does have the same COVID-related stress because of course, all the grocery stores were open and were allowed to operate and it, you know, that's always been the case. And so, you know, Railies and Safeway and, you know, Save More, all these places, you know, other local places that people are buying produce, you know, has always been the case. So I think it really, I think the real issue really is, can you control these non-food or non-farmers, non, not things that are truly not farmers items? And then I think, you know, I do think looking at the fees makes sense as well, but so anyway, I just, I guess those are some comments. I, I was mostly interested in the, the next item. So I'll stay on for that one because it looks like you've separated out that one in particular. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Now taking public comment from Kirk Smith.
Right. I guess first I'd let you know that for the market that's at Marshall Hospital, you don't need to worry about it. It's not competing against the brick and mortar shops. There's only about maybe three, possibly four vendors there. And it's primarily designed to, if not exclusively designed to serve people who are there at Marshall, the employees and visitors. And it, and it goes to the atmosphere of fresh foods, health lifestyle, things like that. On the ones about Sunday, I wouldn't worry about them because I don't go to them. Why would I go to a Farmer's Market on Sunday when I already bought fresh vegetables and other things on Saturday? The one that was at the post office, I thought was limited to organic products. I don't remember any non-food items. At the one at the Ivy House, yes, there were. My memory, just because of what I would be interested in, is there were cutting boards, dish towels and, you know, mugs and things like that that were related to food. The things like jewelry, I wouldn't notice, you know, and so on. So I think that one of the solutions for the kind of concerns that you've expressed is to limit the number of percentage of non-food-related vendors. Because it does, as you were told earlier, add to the atmosphere of attending that event. I guess I'd lastly point out about the sales tax issue. When this was raised a few years ago, I went around and did a survey that you're all welcome to try to replicate. And on a Saturday, went around and talked to all the merchants at storefront places from where the Roundtree Pizza is up to where teenage motors. And I found that all the merchants reported that they had bigger sales on Saturday when the market was there than they did on any other day, for most of them. In the case of someplace like the Bagel Place, it was a big part of their income. So it attracted people in the area. Now, the exception was when the yarn store was there because they have a unique kind of customer base. And yet she liked it because she said it added to the cultural values of this town. So for the price, you really get a big result, a bang for your buck. I think you do collect sales tax from the neighboring businesses. You could, again, limit the number of non-related food items and encourage them to make sure that those non-food items have a relationship to food. So there you go. Those are some comments on that subject and like Jennifer, I'll wait for the Ivy House.
Thank you, Kirk.
Thank you.
Now taking public comment from Lulie.
Good evening, Lulie.
Can you guys hear me?
We can. Good evening.
Hi, City of Placerville. My name is Lulie and I own the Seoul Community Farmer's Market, the Sunday Farmer's Market at the new Relus Building, which was the Wilkinson Lot next to Sherwin-Williams. I wanted to comment on several points that have come up. And I wanted to start by saying, we are the only market that activated when requested by local businesses on Main Street, local farmers, even the Eldorado Winery Association. We worked with Cleve and Terry for weeks and really appreciated their, their time and their efforts. And we, as the only locals, only certified farmer's market in the county, host only local farms and businesses. So there isn't another like us. That's the difference with us. The points I wanted to address are, one, Terry, I wanted to correct Terry's statement. I did not discontinue communicating and just sort of fall off the way. It sounds to me like he's representing me. Actually, thanks Terry and Cleve for the work that they did. Told them both I hope their families were safe and healthy and that I'd be going in another direction. And Cleve responded to that email, thanked me for my work. You know, said some similar niceties and also let me know that he'd been in contact with Pierre and that he knew what direction I was heading in. So just to clean that up a little bit, Councilmember Acuna, I never had a single antique vendor that year, last year, when we did our Vintage Farmers and Flea Market is what we called to, actually, the idea was to enhance the antique market. I worked and am also close friends with Heidi, who was the coordinator for that event. So I had three local, actually vintage vendors who paid the $10, and the $10 fee was for the first 10 vendors locally who submitted their applications. Third, I just wanted to point out to Terry and to Patty, the contract verbiage that Terry's using, that was my contract that I created for Steve Yule before he retired. So I essentially wrote everything in there that's specific to
32.
the local markets. So I was hoping you guys might rewrite that. Further, Patty's actually shopped quite a bit at ours, especially our gluten-free vendors. So I know she knows our post office market. I also wanted to touch that four hours a week for a market cannot be compared to a brick and mortar. There's no power, no water, no shelter. That's not even comparable. And also, I just wanted to advocate for the home businesses and the homesteaders locally because they have a right to sell, just like everyone else. And that's what we're doing is actually offering, supporting, hosting a community Farmer's Market. Similar to the way I lead in the Native American community here in Eldorado County, I lead my market.
3 minutes.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Lulie.
Mr. Mayor, I have two items to read into the record.
Okay.
I have, this, this first one is from Lucy O'Day. She says, "Dear City Council, my name is Lucy O'Day and I am the owner of Flying V Farm in Placerville. We are a certified organic vegetable, flower and fruit farm located on Carson Road. We will be participating in the Seoul Sunday Market this year and have been attending Farmer's Markets in Placerville since our business started in 2018. We have been encouraged by our interactions with the Seoul Market Manager, who has a community-driven approach to the Farmer's Market and has made a swift and extra effort to open the market early with COVID safety precautions in place. In light of the fact that the Seoul Market has been in operation for many years, I would like to challenge the acceptance of another Farmer's Market, Hangtown, on the same day of the week. Placerville is not a large town and farmers already struggle to make a good amount of money to justify the costs of going to market in the first place. What we will see if the city approves a second Sunday Market in Placerville is a thinning of the customer base and vendors struggling to succeed. I believe the city can put, can put effort into encouraging better markets, not more markets. As a vendor and community member, I have observed little marketing or outreach to attract new customers to our Farmer's Markets. And I believe this is partially because one manager alone can't effectively create and maintain a successful Farmer's Market. We need markets that are organized and help accountable and help, excuse me, we need markets that are organized and held accountable by a community farmer-led Board of Directors. A single market association would be our best bet at creating a thriving market culture with managers hired by and accountable to a Board of Directors. Thank you for your time." And then we have, the next one is from Lexi Boger. She writes, "Dear City Council, my name is Lexi Boger and I'm writing as a member of the community regarding the possible approval of the Hangtown Farmer's Market on Sundays in downtown Placerville. This market sounds like an awesome new group and no doubt will be a benefit to the community. So many of these Farmer's Markets are. Historically, the city has done a great job of only allowing one market per day in order to avoid undue competition between markets. After all, we're a small town. How many, how much lettuce can you buy in a day? There is already a Sunday Farmer's Market which opened May 10th in the Relus Lot on Main Street. This market was a combined effort between Seoul Community Market, local farmers, producers and wineries to mobilize quickly and provide a COVID-safe market to provide fresh local food to the community. It was no small task to make this happen early in the season. The spirit behind this endeavor was to serve the community by bringing an easy access, positive, healthy shopping experience during these stressful times. This market organizer could have sat back and waited until, until the normal June opening times like the other markets. It would have been easier and more profitable. But instead, they agreed that the community needed something sooner to give some relief from the coronavirus doldrums. Please consider this effort before you allow a competing market on the same day. Consider that Seoul Community Market is historically the market that occupied the location by the post office that Hangtown Market has applied for. Consider the farmers, producers and wineries that worked hard to bring this COVID-safe market to the public early. It would be a shame that once we hit June, when these producers' crops are in full production, that they will face a competing market on the same day at the same time the stones throw away. As stated earlier, this Hangtown Market sounds awesome, but perhaps as a new organizer and new market, they be offered one of the free time slots that the other historic markets don't already have. Thank you so much for your hard work and consideration."
Thanks, Regina.
Sure, thank you. And there are no further comments, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. We'll bring it back to the council for further discussion, action. Any comments or motions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Okay, well, thank you very much. And I want to thank Terry for his time on this and his advocating for this new applicant. Couple of comments. One, I think this year, everybody needs to realize that while in the past, I think it was great that the main, the brick and mortar stores, while there might have been some competition there, they were open, they were doing business as usual. This is not business as usual. They have had nothing but loss for the last eight-plus weeks, and they're still not all, they're still far from being fully open. To set any kind of competition down there right now this year, I think is inappropriate, whether it's on private property or whether it's on city property. Regarding Lulie's comments, as she specifically named me, if we were to go back, she meant, I mentioned the antique sale, which was one of the last big events of the year she had at the post office on the Sunday Farmer's Market. There was nothing in her agreement with the city that allowed her to have that type of sale. It was strictly as it was, as she took credit for, and this true, she did write a lot of that regulation, it didn't allow for the wholesale turning in to a craft and vintage clothing sale. So it's also my understanding that she was not currently up to date with her SOL registrations and has apparently gotten that taken care of. And I want to thank the Community Development Department, Mr. Rubos, because I understand that he worked late Friday to make sure that Lulie's application for the SOL market on the private lot on Upper Main Street could get processed. Otherwise, that market was, I'm not going to have the necessary city permit. So my question, why that happened at the 11th hour, my understanding that there were issues with the applicants. And it's unfortunate that Terry and his new farmer applicant has kind of gotten caught up with the two private property lots, or at least, yeah, the alcohol and private property lots, the markets. Interestingly, Kirk Smith doesn't remember much, but I remember him being a strong advocate of walking, driving down the hill every Sunday and getting his fresh fruits and vegetables at the post office, and what a wonderful delight that was. Now, he's not quite sure what he remembers there. That's fine. And I want to say first, right out, that I totally support all the local growers and local farmers and organic food, absolutely 110%. I want to see us do everything that we can. It's unfortunate, it seems like there's been a mix now of some private attempts, and this new owner, new operator wants to come on in the old Tetra lot at the post office. I think as, and I certainly appreciate Harris' comments as a real-time dealer at a market and what it took to be prepared and sell. I think we need to maybe look at encouraging the farmer's market on Sunday to be very strictly the agricultural products, and perhaps maybe looking at also reducing the timeframe. I've noticed consistently, summer crops around here are pretty much done, and they're importing things to keep the stands going, depending on the season. I think Terry is suggesting that we go to the end of September in the Tetra lot, and I would suggest perhaps if we look, if we consider that, that we go ahead and maybe say that Labor Day weekend would be the last weekend to allow that lot. Fingers crossed that Apple Hill occurs. Every year in the fall, there's always been a conflict with the hotel being booked, trying to use that parking lot. We have conflicts with lease parking staff, and Lulie did a great job the last two years in getting that worked out, but it took a lot of time. So I wouldn't want to see us lose any ground on that. So those are kind of my thoughts right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Taylor.
Kind of torn on this because, you know, on one hand, I would support the free market as Terry mentioned in his comments, and no other market start, and if people don't want to shop there, they'll shop at the other ones. But I, you know, on the other hand, I've just seen how this works out over the years, and I really do think that it's in, not just the farmer's best interests, but the shoppers and the community to have fewer really successful markets. And I would like to see us moving forward, kind of focus on bolstering the markets that we have, and not really diluting the, you know, I mean, there's only so much money that gets spent in this community, and when you dilute that between multiple markets, it's just not good for anybody.
Thank you, thank you. Councilmember Barelli.
Yes, I would like to, I really think that this is not to be considered a new market, that it was there last year, and Lulie was right, I did shop at this Sunday Market. I enjoyed going down there. And I, I think that this fellow, he's already stated that he has all the vendors, so it's not like he hasn't done his homework. And I kind of disagree with Lexi that it's not a stone's throw. I mean, where she is is at one end of town, and this one's at the other end. And I do think that that, you know, your clients, that does make a difference. So, but again, like I say, I don't think this is a new farmer's market. I didn't know about the Marshall, the one at Marshall either until a couple days ago. You know, and just like I say, it's competition, and if this fellow has, you know, has all his vendors already lined up, it sounds like there's plenty to go around. So it's just my feeling about it.
Okay. Vice Mayor? Oh, yeah, you're still on mute.
You're muted, Dennis.
Thank you. Currently, there are no restrictions on the number of farmer's markets that we can have. And apparently, it's just, right now, it's on a first, appears to be a first come, first served. And what we're doing now is putting a cap on that. And I wouldn't necessarily call it arbitrary, but it sounds like we all have some mixed emotions on that whole concept, as well as I do. But I'm also a firm believer in competitive markets, and we haven't put a cap on grocery stores, we haven't put a cap on restaurants downtown, which there's quite a few, and it has created a lot of competition. We haven't put, you know, a cap on really any businesses in town, really. So I'm kind of, I'm not as, I'm not really as torn in that area as I was a few minutes ago. I do, I am concerned that they're not paying taxes, that they're not, that these people aren't paying business licenses. And I know that there's some laws and regulations around that, and, but the taxes are to be, you know, collected. I think that those, I don't know how we hold that, those vendors or the market director accountable, but, you know, I don't know. Of course, there's mechanisms that we can deploy to do that. I think that's important. And if this was on private property, it wouldn't even come before the city council, just like the one up there at the Wilkinson Building, up there at 681 Main. So, you know, if this was a private one, to me, this issue is really about whether we want to lease that space to that farmer's market or not. Because if you were to do it on private property, it wouldn't be here. It would be, it would be just an over-the-counter deal, and they'd be working with Pierre and Terry on that. So, you know, this is, to me, this is more about a lease. If we want to have a conversation, start limiting the farmer's markets, then that's a whole different conversation to have. The issue of, what was that? The issue of, you know, what a farmer's market looks like, I think that's important because, you know, a farmer's market shouldn't turn into a jewelry market just by, or an antique market, just by virtue of, you know, they can't get enough farmers, so they're going to bring in a bunch of other vendors. I think that, I think that is an important distinction to make. Otherwise, we should have, give them a business license and have them open up a place downtown and compete along with all the other merchants downtown. So, thank you. That's it.
Thank you, okay. Councilmember Acuna.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Terry, I have a question. With the operator at Tetra, has he done his contacts with his farmers? Does he have his, all of his vendors lined up, here?
That's, that's what he has relayed to me. And I just wanted to be, just give you a couple of other insights into kind of the background here. When this applicant came to me with their interest in continuing the market, it was relayed to me that this applicant was stepping in to continue an existing market with existing vendors on that site. Because it was, it was understood and anticipated that the former operator was not going to succeed in getting certified. And so that was the, that was the dynamic that this application came through. I don't have an opinion on these markets. I don't have an interest in creating competition or anything like that. My interest was in just making sure that we didn't lose a market and not in creating any competition or watering down the local capacity. So that's the interest that the applicant had, was to continue an existing market. His discussions with me focused on the fact that he had all of the market folks that had constituted the market in the past, and that the past operator would not be operating the market as far as the vendors that he had worked with for many years, because he has been part of that SOL market for several years. So that's, that just gives you a little bit of background on that. I wanted to put that up.
Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you.
I have a question for Terry.
Yes.
Do you know how many vendors he has lined up?
No, big question.
I never asked him that amount, but I could probably look at last, last year's maps to get an idea.
But if Soul opened another market at that same time, did they not take a lot of those vendors with them?
His understanding was that, that he wasn't sure what vendors she was going to have because he had all those folks lined up with himself. So, like I said, I was just trying to be an expedient public servant to make sure that this community was continuing to have a farmer's market on Sunday.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Terry, thank you for that. Kara, that's a great question. I kind of feel like we're, we've got a combination of things going on here. Patty's point is well taken. This is not, she reminds us, this is not a new market, this is a new operator, continuing on with the SOL market that has been going on, I'm going to say five years. Dennis's points are very well taken also. The, this is a city lot that we are, that we have been responsible for for a number of years. I'll say, just coincidentally, at the same time this application came forward to continue the Sunday Market, we've had two private property, what are those, temporary use permits, Pierre? Is that what that falls under?
Temporary use permit.
Temporary use permits. And as Dennis pointed out, those are on private property, and we would have very little input on any of that. Given that this market has had some good success in the last couple of years, when we got the signage and the parking arrangement and the traffic flow in the lot, thanks to Cleve and Terry and others, it's functioned well. To support this gentleman, if he can continue with these same organic growers, I would request that if he could, have a very low number of other products, other vendors. So in other words, yeah. I hate to, it's not, it's never good to plan on the fly, but leave maybe staff talk to the applicant to see what is the appropriate number. But again, we don't want flea market, you know, jewelry, craft stuff out there. It should be the good farm stuff. My other concern is that when the harvest season is over, our agreement should end. And that seems like that's a little closer to Labor Day than it is October 1st. Now, I don't know if I'm ready to make a motion. I don't, timing is everything on this, so I don't think we want to bring this back. Nope.
No. Councilmember Taylor.
One comment on that, the growing season does go through October. There's a lot of stuff that is still available and in season in October locally. So I don't, I don't know if there's any reason to limit to Labor Day. If it actually gets kind of better in October when the weather gets cooler.
In a normal year, the hotel is booked and the parking is at a premium, is what I suggested.
That's true.
Yeah. Who knows what's going to happen this year, though? Well, it's normal.
That is true. What about the word de minimis, Councilmember Acuna, for in terms of the amount of non-food related? I mean, de minimis gives staff the ability to make that call.
I'd be happy with that, yes. Let's see, where's Mr.?
Mayor, can I?
Yes.
I think it's very blocked up.
I just wanted to, Terry, not to put you on the spot, but I wanted to find out, this came up earlier in terms of whether or not Mr. Dan Wurland, I believe is the name, Harland, excuse me. Whether or not he was aware of the Soul Market opening up at 681 Main Street. I think you said you thought maybe he was, you're not sure, is that correct?
No, I am sure that he knew, because he did mention to me that he knew that she was moving on to a private lot.
Okay, and so, even with, even with that happening, he still wants to open up, same day, same time?
Yes, yes. He and I had talked up until, I think, a couple of days ago. He was aware of the, of the staff report and the date for this meeting and the fact that this was going to be discussed. And his comments about the market that was opening up on the private lot was that, oh no, he had, he had known that that was attempting to open, and that didn't change his, his mind one way or the other, as far as what he wanted to do on the Tetra lot.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Driscoll.
Depending on where the council wants to go with this, in which, what direction you might want to give staff in terms of changes to the lease agreement, I would suggest that if you do approve this, you make it subject to a new lease agreement. Looking at that agreement, that was one that was written, I remember when Mr. Yule was in Terry's position, and there were some things unique to that market that I think we need to look at. For example, the term, I think, needs to be expanded in terms of the ability of the city to not renew every year. This is way it's set up now, it renews every year, subject to an application for special events. There ought to be provisions in there that would give either party the ability to not renew it on certain amount of notice to the other party. Things like that that need to be cleaned up.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Driscoll. Kara.
Question for staff, if we moved forward with approving this, because I do see where Dennis is coming from, and I, I don't disagree that, you know, what we're looking at here is renting a parking lot, and it's not really our role as city council, even though I have personal feelings about this, to decide who should be there. But if we wanted to make a policy change citywide going forward for next season, would we be able to do that so that we could coordinate better with private lots and city lots? Could we change in ordinance?
I believe that, I don't know, there's an ordinance change, be some sort of policy, perhaps an ordinance. I believe that we could work with probably Pierre and Terry and City Attorney, all the four of us, and figure out a way to do something to make it more cohesive perhaps next year.
I think that's an excellent idea.
Do we have a, a motion to entertain?
I, I'm going to make a motion that we allow this gentleman to open the, to open the market there in the Tetra lot.
With a revised lease agreement?
Well, I don't know if we're, we can do that at this, John, you said next year, didn't you, that?
Well, I don't think this, no, I didn't mean that. I may have said that. I don't think, and Terry, correct me if I'm wrong, the lease agreement hasn't signed, obviously, because the council hasn't approved it.
Correct.
We can revise that lease agreement to fit the direction of council. And some of the things that I think we should include in there is a provision that even though, let me back up. Typically, what we do, these types of leases is they renew automatically year after year, so we don't have to redo the lease every year.
Okay.
But we also usually build in a provision that says that it will renew unless either party, city or tenant, gives notice of their intent either to attempt to change the terms of the lease or not to renew within a certain date, say April 1st of every year or whatever. And this one, I didn't think, in looking at it, had that provision in it. It does have a requirement that they have to apply for a special events permit, but I think we should add something like that to this lease, which gives us more flexibility next year, assuming you go ahead with the lease this year.
John, just so you know, there is that provision to give notification by March 1st of next year in that, in that term. And then there's also a provision that allows us to terminate with 30 days' notice.
Yeah, there's a provision in there, there's a provision in there allows us to terminate based on congestion and traffic issues and parking issues, which was unique to that location. And I thought the, they had to apply within 120 days, something like that for a special events permit was in there.
The special events permits have to be less, are less than one year prior. The term in the, in the lease that's the exhibit actually says, it, it talks about the terms and the, and the renewal. It says unless either party serves written notice to the non-terminating party of their intent not to renew the lease by March 1st of each consecutive year. So, it has that severability clause in it already.
Okay, that's good.
Yeah, I, I made sure that that was in there because he, he is a new, a new applicant and we wanted to make sure that we provided him with some direction on this and also some accountability.
So, I guess the only, the only final question I have is, do you want us to tighten up what I'm looking at as uses of the premise, paragraph 3 and 3A primarily in terms of what they are allowed to sell?
I would like to see you have that discussion with this gentleman. He might decide, you know, if we set new terms, not to go forward. But I, it kind of sounds like maybe he won't. I'm hoping not. But I, I think it's a good idea that we start, you know, somewhere and this will be it.
Okay.
That would be, so, Councilmember Borelli, that'd be included in your, in your motion then?
Yes, please.
Okay, so we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Any further discussion? See none. Roll call vote, please.
Mayor Seragosa.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Thomas.
Aye.
Councilmember Acuna.
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli.
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, everybody. That measure passes. Five zero. All right. Item 12.4, consider a request. Oh, oh. Consider a request from the Eldorado County Certified Farmer's Market to move their location from the Eldorado Trail between Clay and Locusts back to the original location in the Ivy House parking lot. And this is Mr. Zeller again.
Yes, now for something completely different. This is a, basically, this is a request. Cleve and I had a meeting in February with, with Jim Colwell and his wife. And they have been operating this market for 28 years. And I guess it was a year or two ago that they moved from the Ivy Lot, which had been their longstanding place, back to the Eldorado Trail area between Clay and Locusts Streets. We had a discussion at that time about the, what he was getting as a lot of input, negative input from his growers about the location and the lack of visibility in that location versus being on the Ivy Lot right on Main Street. So, Cleve and I had discussed with him some modifications we might make to the site. Namely, I had my maintenance crew go out and open up a view shed so that cars on Main Street could see through the lot and then through, across the creek to the entirety of the, of the area that's laid out for the farmer's market. And I think my guys did a really good job. That they, they achieved that, that view shed because a lot of the concern was that people didn't know the market was back there. What was the input that Jim was getting? So, we did that and we also made a commitment to work on making sure that the signage on the corner where the Ivy House lot sign is, is more prominent and also try to do some, some mention of it on our city website also. And those things he agreed to move forward based on, on those modifications. And then very recently, he requested, he, it was last week, he called me and asked for reconsideration of the Ivy House lot location. He has also submitted a letter and I'd like to read that. I know it's getting late, but I, I wanted to read that into the record because I didn't get it from him right away till the other day. So, it says, "Council members, I've been a manager of Placerville CFM since its inception 28 years ago. The public opinion of the market is that it's dedicated to the success of the Eldorado County farmers and with the inclusion of some Sacramento Valley growers, has a variety of products that the public appreciates. This year, due to the coronavirus restrictions have been imposed by state and local agriculture and environmental management. A basic description would be that only farmers and prepackaged food may, farmers with prepackaged food may be sold at the market and they must devise separation between each participant. There are other safety items, including hygiene, handling and social distancing of customers, but I wish to draw your attention to the market layout. In 2020, I'm anticipating a 25% reduction in participants. In 2019, with 48 participants and 57 stalls, the impression of the market was 500 feet of the Eldorado Trail. I attached my hopeful wish of a solution and he gave us a layout of the Ivy Lot. It says, "The participants have been disappointed in the Eldorado Trail and the consumers, especially the seniors, have been unhappy with what he calls the hike," in quotes. I've been asked by many to see if we could move back to the Ivy House parking lot. The attached is a rough idea of how it might work if relocation were possible. As a last thought, when the restriction became history, the market could go back to its 2017 layout, which accommodated 49 participants in 57 stalls." He says, "Unfortunately, there's another request. The market income will decrease 25% also. I know the market will require two portable outhouses and a handwashing station since Sweetie Pie's is doing takeouts only. Also anticipate the necessity of hiring two additional people for the market. Customer accounting requirements with waiting areas at six foot, social distancing also. I might be able to hire them for free produce, but this has proved out to become a request by the donators for a free stall space. While these new requirements and reduced income and increased expenditures continue, the market would appreciate a reduction of the city fees. I know this is a hard time for all my requests are made by necessity and he signs it sincerely. Thank you for your consideration, Jim Colwell." So, I just wanted to give you that as a background. So, the request is twofold. If you get back to the staff report, it is, there's a, there's a request for relocation of the market to the Ivy Street Lot and there's also a fee reduction. And so, those are the items that are before you for consideration. And the cost would be a $50 reduction. They pay 150 a month right now. And just to give you, for instance, the, the Sunday farmer's market pays $100 a month. And I'll take any questions.
The what market pays 100?
The, the Tetra lot market that we just discussed, their, their lease has been 100 per month. And the bell tower is 50 per month.
Okay. Thank you, Terry. Questions for Mr. Zeller at this point? Okay, I'm going to go ahead and open up public comment.
Mr. Mayor, while we're waiting for public comment, I'll read something from Sue Rodman.
Okay.
She says, "I'm a longtime customer of the Eldorado County Certified Farmer's Market, both at its original location in the Ivy House Lot and the Eldorado Trail location. These are my comments. It is not just the higher cost to manage the market under the COVID-19 requirements. It is also that the Ivy House parking lot has only three entrance points of limited width that could be monitored adequately, while access on the trail is much wider and would be quite difficult to monitor. Pedestrian traffic flow could also be directed in the Ivy House Lot, while on the trail, it necessarily flows in both directions, making physical distancing almost impossible. No matter which direction you enter the market at the trail location, you need to walk along the vendors to purchase their products and then turn around and walk back on the same route to get to your vehicle. If you limit walking to one direction, people will have to walk out to Main Street and then circle back to their cars. It would be an increased hardship for people with limited mobility. It would also be an inconvenience that would cause people to avoid the farmer's market altogether. Reducing the fees is a logical action to keep our local farmer's market solvent. Economic hardship from COVID-19 is not limited to the city of Placerville. It also affects Placerville residents. Our local farmer's market supplies fresh, high-quality food at reasonable prices when supplies may be limited because of the ongoing effects of COVID-19. Our farmer's market is really a valuable public service that deserves support from the city council. I support both of the requests from the Eldorado County Certified Farmer's Market to move their location from the Eldorado Trail between Clay and Locusts Streets back to its original location within the Ivy House parking lot on Clay Street and to reduce the lease amount per month due to higher costs in managing the market under COVID-19 requirements. Please select option one, approve the request for the relocation of the market to the Ivy House Lot and reduce the fee." And we will now take public comment from 846.
Yeah. Hi, it's Jennifer.
Hello.
So, yeah, I, I mean, this is all being framed in, in the COVID terms, but when you read this staff report, it, it just really sounds like the city keeps trying to convince these people about, about this other location. I mean, you know, and I think Sue's letter made a really great series of points about the COVID issues, but, you know, 28 years, I mean, there's no reason to move this farmer's market unless, you know, that project ends up, unless you actually end up having a construction project going on. It, you know, I think Kirk will probably chime in if he's still on the line, you know, about the feedback of how it helped enhance, you know, just starting out Saturday, kicking off the morning. It's, it's not all day and it creates, you know, it creates activity that, that is positive for business and it's at one end of the street. I, you know, these parking issues are a whole other topic that need a lot of planning for a whole lot of reasons and, you know, just, I just want to throw out there, I don't, I don't know. And I know it's at the other end of the block or at the end of Main Street, but I just wonder if that, if that city parking lot, the double, the built parking lot down by the city offices ever does actually get full. I hope it gets used because it was created, you know, to create a double, double-layered lot. But, you know, I just, there's so many things that are pointing to this group of farmers having more success and wanting to be in this other location where they're just open and more integrated. It's more conducive, that kind of a flow to that kind of markety feeling. You know, putting it in a corridor, in a tight corridor is forcing, you know, forcing a design on a kind of experience that just doesn't make sense. I mean, it's like being in a buffet line. It's not, you know, a farmer's market is a market. It's more gregarious when it's, you know, in a square shape instead of a big long line, you know, like an assembly line or something. It just doesn't go with the farmer's market experience. So, I just think, you know, again, and, you know, it's premature to say what's going to happen, you know, with all of these plans and visions, but all I know is that a lot of vegetation was cleared. Now, when you're on that lot, if, if the farmer's market isn't there, it's basically gravel instead of vegetation. So, the experience just running or biking along there isn't as nice. And when it was graded and excavated, artifacts were being discovered, which I didn't see them personally, but I, I believe there was photos. And, you know, again, it's the corridor of this, you know, of the railroad and there's all this history and all these other things about that corridor. And right now, when it's not a farmer's market, it's just gravel. It's ugly. So, anyway, I just hope you'll put, put it back and leave it back in the Ivy House until there's really a reason that it needs to move.
Thank you.
No further comment, Mr. Mayor?
Okay, we will bring this back to council for further discussion.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, we do have two hands that were raised. I know that there can be a small lag, so if you wouldn't mind, we have Kirk Smith next.
Right now, I guess I'd point out that Mark Acuna's memory is ostensibly correct, except you'll recall that the comments I made about the Sunday market years ago was when it was located in the parking lot of the Fox parking lot. Huge difference. Likewise, the, the, the farmer's market on Saturday was hugely successful and has been for 20 years plus. It was a great institution and I, like a great many customers, were disappointed when we perceived both operators as bowing to pressure to move. When the Saturday market moved to near the post office, it was difficult to get started all over again. So, by the, my last year, there was started to see some changes. So, in competition, you have to see what it bears. But for all the folks I've been telling you, it was enormously successful and there was a lot of opposition to moving it to accommodate the city's interest in the Clay Street project. It had, did not have the same atmosphere. It was much more difficult. So, and it's really a throwback to what it was like 100 years ago in this town, where groceries were always fresh, local and organic because they didn't have refrigeration and it was done locally. Now, stores deliver, chain stores, which is what used to be the case in Placerville. So, it was a real institution and very successful. I think that some of the issues that you've raised, like sales tax, there's a way where you can estimate the amount of income from each vendor and come up with a figure for each vendor on what you could receive for compensation. It wouldn't be a sales tax, but it's comparable to being able to get that. Likewise, on the non-food related items, again, give a number, a percentage of the vendors that can be non-agricultural. If you had somebody selling face masks, I hope that would be a hot seller because for COVID-19, it's actually a big advantage to being out in the air where air circulates because contrary to what you were told earlier, masks do work, especially when everybody uses them. Like, that's why when I go to the Nugget Market in El Dorado Hills, you cannot get into the market unless you're wearing a mask. Trader Joe's will actually number the people who can go in at any one time for just those reasons.
Three seconds, Kirk.
So, get some masks and it'll take some time, but it'll be a success if you put it back to where it belongs. Thank you.
Thank you, Kirk.
Now taking public comment from 857.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Can you hear me?
I, we can.
Okay, so, I love competition and I just want an even, as much of an even playing field as we can have amongst businesses. We have people with brick and mortar invested in thousands and thousands of dollars a month. The farmers have, we have, farmers always know, sometimes you have just a blast of product and you either dump it in the field or you market it. The thing where we're concerned about too many crafts and jewelry being marketed at these markets, damaging Main Street businesses. these markets, damaging Main Street businesses, we also have grocery stores that are selling produce. And no one has mentioned that local farmers are gonna be damaging that competition. But hopefully, the farmer's markets are selling produce that are unique, rare, you can't really get in your chain stores. The whole thing about the price, $100 for a month of a market, kind of strikes me as a little bit small, and I just don't understand why this doesn't go out to open bid. Why don't all of these markets go out to open bid every year? You should only contract one year at a time. You set a time and date and a month that every farmer's market we will have. The city will sponsor one farmer's market per day, seven days a week, but they're all open for open bidding. That seems to be the most fair way to do it. When you have two markets on the same day, sure, somebody's gonna have better customer service. One market is gonna start to upset its customers, they'll go over to the other one. But I think open bidding on this, to set a fee of $100 a month for an operator is kind of arbitrary. Why not take bids? Just my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you.
No further comments, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Regina. Okay, we'll bring it back. Terry, just one question on the, how do we set the prices on these? Is there a, what mechanism do we use to set the cost?
There's no mechanism that I've discovered yet in my, in my time looking at these. So, I'm not sure how they were set in the past. I think that it had something to do with the, the size of the market. I'm assuming that that was the case, because the bell tower is smaller than Tetral, and Tetral is smaller than the market that we're talking about right now. But I don't know that these dollars are tied to anything except for what was negotiated or discussed at the time that these contracts were written.
Thank you.
I confirm that, Mayor. It was basically negotiation with the farmer's markets.
So, I mean, it's been this price for forever, then? I mean, recent history?
I, I know that the Ivy House lot was raised at one time. It was actually $100. It was raised to 150 within the last probably four, maybe five years, so.
Right, right.
I mean, that seems like a pretty ancillary amount.
I agree. I think that the, I think the desired effect was to, to add to amenities for downtown more than to look for a market compensation for the lots.
Right.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Are we done with public comment?
We are.
All right. Can I make a couple of comments?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Yeah, I've always felt that the prices for these are really a great deal. If you think about it, for $25 a week, you can rent a city parking lot and have a party for six or eight hours, depending on what the arrangement is. I mean, that's crazy. I want to say several years back in the Steve Yule days, he was directed to use the value of at least parking spaces and break it down mathematically, and we came up with these really low numbers. And they don't seem like they're at all relative to the staff time that has, sometimes can occur, not every season, but there can be issues, like any operation, nobody's fault, that they take time, and it's certainly a great deal. Regarding the Ivy House and the Caldwell's, they have certainly, this is like the granddaddy of all Placerville farmer's markets. And there are, as I indicated, 27, 28 seasons of great memories and growth and huge crowds and massively successful. One of the things that has always worried me is that this is where you're using a city parking lot for the market. We are then counting on either city parking, or a large percentage of the customers to that market use private property parking lots to come and go to the market. The inter-county title has always, or the old inter-county title site, maybe a historic site now, they have always just looked the other way for the benefit of the community and never said a thing. Their parking lot got used for 10 hours every Saturday. Same thing, the dentist's office on the Farm and Shooter meeting in Pacific, same thing with the Thompson, Judge Thompson Legal Office, all those parking lots got used. The only business that I, well, there were a couple, Senior H Motors, traditionally I always put up a no farmer's market parking, because they were open. And that was all great, and that, that was fine. Had there ever been an accident, however, and a claim had been put against somebody's private insurance, I, I wonder whether, how that, how it would have looked for a city-sponsored function, did we, depending on private lot, private parking, basically trespass, is what we were saying. Go out and park. So, that to me was one of the, one of the many reasons why when Cleve, and it didn't have anything to do with the Clay Street Bridge project, suggested the idea that we look at expanding the creekside trail into the farmer's market. There are a number of communities, large and small, that have used their creeksides for marvelous marketing, community gathering projects. And I know I saw this as a baby step towards seeing if the creek experience couldn't be enhanced. I know there's a lot of folks that are involved in planning, and there's a lot of discussion about, you know, regional concepts, but you're talking about using a parking lot for your farmer's market, or you're talking about walking down along a creek to do your shopping at the farmer's market? And I can't say where, where would it be better to be wandering around? Would you rather walk in a somewhat dilapidated, oil-stained parking lot, or would I rather walk along a creek? I think I would rather walk along a creek. And I do not understand, I see this, see the need this year, but this is, to me, is a giant step backwards in what is a hugely underutilized asset, and that is Hangtown Creek. How it is that this community cannot see the value in making even baby steps towards developing this asset is beyond me. Again, this year aside, because of the COVID issue, I think I can understand the concern. We want to make everything as comfortable as possible for the vendors, and again, 100% I support our local farmers and the unique produce that they can bring to the market. I would see, I would ask the council, my council members to consider, because the farmer's vendors don't want to, the trail scares them. Well, let's not give up on the trail. I, I think a creekside walk is still a heck of a lot better experience than wandering around in a parking lot. I can do that in Sacramento, anyplace. I would suggest that we offer to the Caldwell's the use of the trail, still continued use of the trail for that portion that is immediately behind the Ivy House parking lot. And this is something that I tried to get incorporated in Cleve's original plan, the use of the trail between the Clay Street Bridge and the back of Town Hall. If you're familiar with that, there is a solid pedestrian park, well, there's a vehicle bridge that comes across there to Town Hall Parking Lot. We've, it's affectionately known as, as the Troll Bridge or Steve Yule's Bridge. That was where he would go out and decompress after meetings. Again, walking along under some huge, mature trees along the creek, we could also make the restroom facility available at Town Hall, which currently is locked. And again, the Town Hall Parking Lot would be available, so we'd have the restroom, we have the parking lot. Allow the trail to still be available to the farmer market experience, so that hopefully we can continue to expand the, maybe reduce some of the mystery and let folks see that that really is a much more beautiful location for vendors. But those are my current thoughts, and I totally agree with reducing the price this year, again, just because of the emergency. We have to do everything we can to help these traditions move on.
So, Mark, with that, so, would your suggestion then be they use part of the Ivy House parking lot and the back, that, that portion of the trail?
Yes, sir. Yep. Just, just to, as a, just as a, as a token of our faith that that can eventually become a venue that people will be lining up to use, if, you know, if we can continue to make some of the, again, countless examples of creek, creek walk, stream walk, river walk projects throughout communities that can, to enhance as well as protect the creek.
Okay, I'm confused, Mike. Mark, you said use this part, part of the parking lot?
I'll describe it again, Patty. It would be to allow the Caldwell's to use the portion of the trail immediately behind the Ivy House Parking Lot.
Okay, behind, not, not.
Behind, correct. And then from that point down to Town Hall.
Okay, I got you.
Make the Town Hall restrooms available, make that parking lot available.
So that you'd have to cross Clay Street?
Which they already do.
Right, all right. Okay, I, I'm gonna be up next, please.
Yes.
I, too, have, I thought long and hard to, to get that, the farmer's market moved out of the parking lot and use it as a parking lot, for the very reasons that Mark brought up, is that they were so congested and using other people's property, which, and it was just, it was, it created situations that were terribly dangerous, I thought. Also, and then once we established it, and we had some renderings, we had a lot of things planned for that trail. And I think Cleve, in fact, I know he's still got the, the renderings in his office, and we had a lot of plans, like I say, for that trail. And I was fortunate enough to go one year with the Chamber of Commerce, and we went to Idaho. And it might be considered oranges and apples, I don't know, but it's still, a trail is a trail. And one of the things that they featured on our trip was they took us on that trail and showed what the folks there did. And there's just so many wonderful possibilities that we could, to boost the economic climate and, and use of that Hangtown Creek, which I agree with Mark, is just so underutilized, and it's a gem for our community, and we just don't take advantage of it. We've tried and tried. I, I've been on the council now, what, going on 14 years, and that was one of the things when I first ran for council, was trying to enhance that creek. And at the time, Pierre Rivas was on the council with me, and he tried really hard. We, again, lots of plans, but it was, always came down to the issue, there's no money. We can't afford it. Because it did entail the property owners to do something with their backyards, and that's one of the things they did in Idaho, is that the restaurants opened up their back doors, they had a footbridge, and it, people rented bicycles and rode their bikes, and they had wine tasting place on the trail, they had beer tasting, they had, you know, sales. It was just, it was a wonderful situation that they've got up there. We could do the same thing on a smaller scale, I agree with that, but I really, really do not want to see us take a step back. It seems like everything we do, we just get started and something happens that knocks it out of our sails. And I think by moving this back into the parking lot is just going against what we're trying to hopefully achieve. I, I'll agree to reduce the cost, but only for this year. And I, I really think that there's just too, too much riding on this, and that's just where I, I'm coming from.
Okay, thank you, Patty. Council member Taylor?
I'm a, I'm somewhat indifferent about moving it to the Ivy House. The Ivy House, it was a really successful market at that location, and I know, just as a shopper, being there the last couple of years, it does seem slower at the new location. However, I'm not sure if that's because of the location or because of a lack of marketing and just people getting to it. So, I'm, you know, I, I'm kind of on the fence in terms of that. I would, I would be okay either way with the Ivy House if it was only for this year, given the, the COVID situation. But I, I think that our pricing is kind of out of whack for the bell tower to be $50 and the southern market to be $100. So, I think that, you know, for lowering the price, given the COVID-19 situation and the additional expenses the market is gonna incur this year, I'm for that. But I think that we should just make any terms that we established tonight only for this year, and then take a good look at everything again for next year.
Thank you, Kara. Is that, do you want to reframe that into a motion?
I make a motion to, does anyone else? Actually, no, I'm not ready, because I'm indifferent on the location. Does anyone else? Dennis, what do you think about the location?
You know, I think we've worked hard to move the, the, the farmer's market back there on the trail and to reclaim that parking lot for, for that, for the purpose it was intended for. I do, you know, the idea that having the farmer's market there helps a lot of the merchants in that area, I, I believe that's true. It does bring a lot of traffic. You know, I, I believe that, and it was previous, I don't, I don't think it was under our council, this council that, current council that we moved it. It was prior to that, wasn't it, Mark?
Yeah, that's correct.
Yeah, and.
Mark and I were both on the council when it moved.
And you went through a great effort to, to move that and to get the grading done and for a good purpose. I'm inclined to leave it back there. I get why he wants to move it. I, I'm happy to, you know, I'm happy to, I'm not happy to. I think there, there could be more marketing, I want to do it. There could be more marketing done to bring some attention to it, I think. Right now, I think a lot of people are interested in getting out and servicing this. I don't think they'll have a problem with attraction with, with a little bit of marketing effort. And so, that's, that's kind of where I'm leaning.
What does the council feel about the social distancing requirements if it were to be kept in the same location, at least for this, this year? Only talking about this year, not anything going forward.
There's, there's literally a line down the middle of the pathway.
That's right, I agree.
If you're walking this way on this side, if you're walking this way on that side. I mean, it, I, I don't, you know, the, the, if I remember correctly, when I was over in the parking lot, there, you know, those, there's a lot of people there, and they were moving about, too. So, I don't know that it's a, really a difference in terms of proximity to one another, whether you're there or the other.
I think in either market, you would just need to make directional arrows and make sure everyone's walking in the same direction, but, you know, whether it's a circle or down one way and back the other way.
Yeah.
And, you know, and, and in view of this, if you're talking, the COVID, I really think that the trail would be far easier to make it work than crowded in that one little square. You know, you could, they could really monitor it much better than in, you know, such close proximity.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I certainly appreciate my colleague's support for the creekside idea. Then, could I ask perhaps if we could let Mr. Zeller go to the Caldwell's and offer that little additional use of the trail and perhaps the Town Hall facility? Do you address some of those concerns? One of the growing pains that we had the first year was getting the parking moved in, you all. are you all familiar with the Quonset Hut?
Yeah.
And getting, getting that available for customers instead of having it tied up for emergency access or extra vendor areas to move around. And if, if we were to shift the thing to both sides of Clay Street, that would allow that parking to move down even further past the Quonset Hut for customers on that end, as well as parking in the Clay Street lot, or, excuse me, in the Ivy House lot, and parking in the Town Hall lot, if we were to allow them to go down there. Or at least make the, allow Mr. Zeller to have that conversation with them.
How much would it cost, though, Mark, to prepare the other side of Clay Street?
I think it's pretty cleaned out. We used to, we used to have a lot of cars that went down there, use it for parking.
Well, I don't know. I can check, we could check with Mr. Morris, that he could let, tell us how much, I mean, I think it costs the city some money to prepare that site. Am I right or wrong, Cleve?
We, we could deal with our internal crews, and I don't think it would be a huge amount of cost.
Okay, great. I just-
I think it could be reasonable.
Cara?
I really like the idea of expanding the market to a shadier part of the trail and having access to the Town Hall bathroom. I'm having a hard time envisioning that section of trail, and if it's wide enough for vendors, and then also the effect of just that much traffic, pedestrian traffic crossing Clay Street, and kind of splitting the vendors in half and what that would do. I, I think we should approve for this year at the location lined out in the staff report. And then, I would like to make an agenda item to kind of look at our policies on farmer's markets in general, and we could look at Mark's idea about expanding it down the Eldorado Trail at that discussion.
Could I, could I make perhaps a suggestion? And I think maybe this was where Councilmember Acuna was going. If you were to allow Terry and I to go back and talk to the Colwells, they may jump on the opportunity of not having to rent bathrooms if we could find a way to make a Town Hall available for that. I know, I believe that, I believe it states that they, those restrooms have to be within 200 feet of the market. Therefore, if you keep it up just to the east side of Clay Street, you likely do not reach that. But if you extend it to the other side of the trail, you probably do reach that, and it would qualify that way. So I think maybe where I was going is if, if you would allow us to talk to them and see if they are open to that, and maybe they like the idea. If they do, we could try that for this year. If not, if they're still dead set against it, wanting to go back to the parking lot, give us-
Do we have, do we have time, Cleve, in terms of next council meeting?
Well, I think the thought is if you wanted to grant that authority to Terry and I to make that final decision, if they strongly disagree with moving, as Councilman Acuna said, we would go ahead and approve letting them for one year only be in the Ivy House parking lot, unless you strongly object to that.
I'm against that. I'm not gonna, I'm not for that at all.
Could we use the lot here, at Town Hall, in conjunction with the trail?
Are we talking for setting up of the farmer's market?
Yeah.
Well, that belongs, doesn't it, the courthouse? Isn't the courthouse involved?
No, she's talking, he's saying Town Hall, so that's our-
I'm sorry?
Town, Town Hall parking lot?
Oh, oh, oh.
So you would go down the trail and then into Town Hall, and then the bathrooms would be there?
A question about the bathrooms. Given the, the new cleaning procedures and everything under COVID-19, would allowing the farmer's market to use Town Hall bathrooms impose more staff costs and cleaning costs to the city while at the same time reducing their farmer's market fees?
I was thinking the same thing, Cara. I think that's-
And also just bring a lot of potential exposure into Town Hall for, you know.
I, I'm not too sure about that.
My only problem with the Town Hall restrooms are that if you, if you leave the door open for the restrooms, our office is secured, but there's nothing to stop people from going upstairs.
Right.
We would have to take a look at that issue, definitely.
I guess I would go, I'd be happy to make a motion and see what, see what we think here, to go ahead and approve staff's requests to reduce the fee, but to deny the request to relocate the farmer's market from the trail. And to direct staff to work with the Colwells to explore the use of the trail from Clay Street West to Town Hall, and explore the use of Town Hall as a restroom facility staging area.
How do you mean that? Staging area?
Pardon?
Direct, use Town Hall as a staging area, you said?
Yeah, but parking lot and restroom facility. The idea, with the understanding that staff and the applicant will determine whether or not there is adequate space for additional vendors, how many vendors, and whether or not it's financially feasible, given the requirements for the bathroom maintenance.
I don't think, it didn't sound to me like staff really wants their bathrooms used.
Well, it's just a matter of making sure that it's secure and that it's clean. And if those are two objectives, we can definitely look into it.
I guess I'm not opposed to exploring those potentials, but I, it seems a little bit infeasible under the current circumstance. But I'll go ahead and second that. I'm not, I'm not opposed to exploring.
And then, and then leave the final decision to, to Terry and Cleve?
Yeah, if, I would not want the bathroom to be used if it's gonna cost the city more money and we're reducing their staff cost or their market fees. But if you decide that, you know, the bathroom is usable and they'll pay more for the cleaning and use of the bathroom, you know, or decide that it's not even an option.
I think that may be a possibility. And then what I'm hearing is if, if they reject that and that doesn't work, something that's feasible for that, then we tell them, that's fine, then you can continue in the current location.
Right, yeah. That's how, that's how I interpreted it.
And then they would have to have the bathrooms.
Their own bathrooms, yes.
Their own, yeah, their own bathrooms. And they was, and again, my motion is to have them stay on the trail.
Correct, understand. Okay.
So we have a first and a second. Do we have further discussion? Or questions of clarification for the first and the second?
Yeah, I think just repeating the motion would be good for me.
Oh, sure. Make something hard for me to do. My motion would be to approve staff's recommendation for the fee reduction, but to reject the request to relocate the market from the trail, and to direct staff to work with the applicant to explore the use of the trail from Clay Street West to Town Hall, the economics of using the Town Hall restrooms, and also using the Town Hall parking lot as parking for the farmer's market.
Okay, I think we can, we can move forward on that.
Okay. Ms. O'Connell, oh, go ahead, Mark.
I could, I could add that we direct staff to work with the applicant to determine the viability of vendor locations for this season on the Clay Street to Town Hall section.
Okay.
Is that a new motion?
It just keeps going on and on and on.
All right, we have.
Okay, all right. So roll, roll call, please.
Mayor Saragosa?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Thomas?
Hi.
Councilmember Acuna?
Hi.
Councilmember Borelli?
Hi.
Councilmember Taylor?
Hi.
All right, look at that. We got to a 5-0 on it.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to item 12.5, adopt a resolution approving amendment number two to authorize consulting service agreement with Doken Engineering for construction support savings in the amount of $19,474. Approving amendments number one to authorization number 10 for consulting agreement with Doken for the same amount. And then item number three, authorizing the engineering department to prepare and release requests for proposals for construction management services for the Western Placerville Interchange Phase 2.2 Eastbound On Ramp. And Ms. Neves has item 12.5.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. The item before you this evening is another important step moving towards delivering the Western Placerville Interchange Phase 2.2 project to construct the Eastbound On Ramp at Ray Lawyer Drive. So the city successfully received local partnership program funding through SB1 to construct the Eastbound On Ramp. And originally, this was proposed as a contract change order Phase 2, but for various reasons was deemed to be delivered as a standalone project, and the city's been moving forward in that direction for some time now. Along the way, there was a need for additional engineering and environmental services for the 2.2 project. The existing contract with Doken as the city's environmental consultant on the project had a level of savings realized in their scope related to the construction engineering of the Phase 2 project, which is now complete. Doken evaluated their scope and fee and identified the savings and proposed it to cover the additional engineering and environmental services needed to support the delivery of the Phase 2.2 project. The proposed amendments before you this evening identify the savings and transfer contract budget to cover the additional environmental work. Subsequently, the city, with the support of Eldorado County Transportation Commission and Caltrans, has been able to secure additional funding for construction of the project in the form of Highway Improvement Program, or HIPF funding, and state highway operational and protection program funding, or SHOP funds. And through the city's Traffic Impact Mitigation Fund, which is a developer-10 fee-based program, as you know, and these funding sources comprise the funds necessary to construct the project. City staff would also like to specifically thank Woodrow Deloria and Dan Bolster, as well as all the commissioners for the Eldorado County Transportation Commission, with support from county DOT to help us secure the HIPF funding. And also a huge thank you to Tom Brandon and his team at Caltrans for their support and the funding of the highway operational improvements through the SHOP program that we've included in the project. As indicated, the project has progressed through environmental and design, including various necessary agreements for the city in order to deliver this project, and the funding allocation for construction is scheduled to be on the California Transportation Commission's June agenda. With that, the city is ready to proceed with soliciting proposals for construction management services for the 2.2 project in advance of the construction funding allocation, with a contract award for those consultant services following approval by the CTC, tentatively scheduled for about July. Staff intends to release the RFP, the Request Proposals, this month. Staff's recommendations are summarized in the report before you, and that concludes my verbal report. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Ms. Neves. Questions for Rebecca at this point, from council? Okay, seeing none. We'll move to public comment.
Now taking public comment from 857.
Good evening, council, for the last time. Just wondering again, so these roadway projects go out to bid. Why doesn't everything the city does go out to bid? You know, back to the farmer's market, why doesn't that go out to bid? If we're going to be fair and opportunistic, why doesn't everything go out to bid? That's my question. Thank you.
Thank you.
No further public comment, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. In terms of going out to bid, I know not every action the city takes needs to have that particular step. I mean, for one, the, you know, anything that we lease or we can just go ahead and do that within our purview. I don't know if Rebecca or Cleve you had any comments to that. Yep. Go ahead, Rebecca.
Good, good job, good intro there. Yeah, no, so actually, not every construction project goes out to bid per se, because public contract code allows certain dollar figures for projects to be essentially just services or construction work solicited and go out to bid that way. There's, you know, several tiers of the public contract code. You have informal bidding, you have public bid, which this project would be public bid, and you also have just work by other forces beyond, you know, the abilities of what staff can typically deliver. So we actually use a combination of all of these. So not everything goes out to bid as far as construction goes. We follow the public contract code guidelines.
Thank you.
I could add to that, Mayor, you know, just, just to say flat out that everything should go out to bid is not fair to say, because you're talking size limitations. Does it, is it really worth it to put something out to bid for a $100 purchase? At some point, it becomes unreasonable in times, in terms of the time constraints. I could probably have Rebecca go on for about an hour. I won't have her do that in terms of what it takes to get something ready to go out to bid. It's not always a simple process. And so for certain areas, certain sizes of purchases, it just does not make sense to go to that level. Obviously, you try to get quotes on a lot of things so that you do get the best price possible, but to go out to what he's, we're saying as bid does not make sense.
Right. Thank you. Thank you both for those clarifications. And that was, okay, so we, I'll close public comment, bring it back to city council.
I'll move recommendation to staff.
I'll second it.
All right, we have a first and a second. Further comments, seeing none. Roll call, Ms. O'Connell.
Mayor Saragosa?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Thomas?
Hi.
Councilmember Acuna?
Hi.
Councilmember Borelli?
Hi.
Councilmember Taylor?
Hi.
All right, that passes 5-0. Thank you. Thank you, Rebecca. All right, moving on to council reports from other agencies. Transit, item 13, and the first one is transit authority.
Do you like me to take that, or?
Sure.
Um, we reviewed, you know, just the major budget impacts that transit is facing due to COVID-19, and they're updating clean protocols, and, you know, they're still offering free fares, and they've put in some shields between the driver and the passengers wherever possible. A lot of the local routes are now loading from the rear. And then we also reviewed and approved plans to reduce service hours and staffing, unfortunately. Just something all transit authorities are facing right now, and there's talk of stimulus money that may benefit transit, but it's not coming fast enough. So it's a, it's a really challenging time there. One bright thing that is happening is there were three bills that were being proposed that would basically make most rides free for public transit, and that's being postponed for now. So, in light of everything, so that's, that's the transit authority.
Thank you, Cara. Transportation Commission.
You know, I'm gonna pass this because I had to miss some of the meeting because my computer was on the fritz, and I, we weren't, so I missed some of it. So, but I think the main thing is what Rebecca actually just introduced here. We did talk about that, and Cara, do you, can you think of anything else that, it was a very short meeting, I know that.
The 50 hotspot study is still moving forward.
Yeah, we talked about that.
Consultants are preparing draft alternatives to some different- Consultants are preparing draft alternatives to some different, um, scenarios on Highway 50, which will hopefully be, uh, you know, made public late summer or the fall. Um, and in anticipation of infrastructure stimulus, the EDCTC is working with county, city, SECOG, water agencies, um, at, to develop a list of shovel-ready projects. It seems like, unlike all the other agencies that, um, we're involved with, it seems like they're actually fairly optimistic that there will be funds coming out of all of this, um, for infrastructure. So that's one bright spot.
And, and I think that they're, um, they've had a lot of communication with our, um, David Church, Church, that we, you know, approved to have him be our rep. Um, so he's keeping, he's really keeping the transportation committee abreast on what's going on back in DC.
Okay. Thank you both. Uh, LaFco?
We'll meet later this month, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you. Uh, SECOG, uh, basically we've gone over, um, anticipating our budget for next year on SECOG. Like everybody else, it's going to be, uh, probably some reductions. Uh, they think they can find some of that through, uh, attrition or not filling positions as well as, um, taking some of our reserves out. That was to leave us about a 16% reserve. Uh, so we'll still be fairly healthy, uh, at least at this point. Uh, we'll have to potentially come back to this as we get a clearer picture on, on the budget. And that's basically it from, on the SECOG side. Uh, Placerville Fire Safe Council.
You know, I had, uh, quite a lengthy report and I'm going to put it, I'm going to do it for our next meeting. But I just do want to say fire season's here and, uh, we really need to start thinking about it. So. And I'll, I'll read you the report and what all they've been doing next time.
Thank you, Patty. All right. Uh, moving on to item 14, uh, request for future agenda items.
I would like to request that we look at our farmer's market policy for next season, maybe in, you know, January or February, um, and just determine where the ideal locations are, um, which days are ideal for the community. And have, try to get everyone on the same page. So we don't have all these markets popping up without them knowing about each other.
Council, everybody in agreement on that?
Yeah.
I hope so.
Okay. All right. Anything else? All right. Seeing none. Uh, we'll go to any, uh, staff reports, uh, from city manager or other staff.
Nothing further tonight, Mayor.
All right. Thank you. Um, upcoming items. I think the only, uh, well, hopefully we'll get to do the Memorial Trailhead plaque one day when we can actually all be out there and be able to, uh, to do that in person. We have, uh, Stormwater Resources Plan Certification, Mother J Report, Upper Broadway Bike Lanes Construction, Cultural Inspections Amendment, uh, all upcoming items, uh, in the future. Uh, and with that, uh, at 10:59, I will adjourn, uh, tonight's meeting. So we made it under 11 o'clock. At least according to my, my clock.
And you made it through, Mike.
I know. That's, I got, I got better as time went on here.
Good.
Thank, thank you, everybody. Good night.
Everyone. Good night. We'll be in touch.